Call the meeting, the order of the State Board of Education. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Should I get?
It's been moved in second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Motion carried, the agenda is approved. Move on to public comment. Just to note that the State Board's agenda is full. I may place limits on the public comment based on the number of members of the public who tend to speak. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to the public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda, a topic from public comment that is not related to an agenda item. Today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. I do have one person who has filled out a card to speak to the board and I'd like to know how many others we have online that wish to address the board. So hearing, waiting for that number. Corey is up. Corey?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I assume I sit here that?
Sure.
My name is Corey Lunn. I'm a retired superintendent and I now work with Choice Charter Schools kind of to help them with all those things that schools are asked to do. I'm here today to share some of the successes we have had over the past year, our first year. We began the year with 64 students and ended with 140. We graduated 21 seniors. These are students that would not have graduated otherwise. By the way, there are still some 4,000 students still waiting to complete the requirements for a diploma. Our parent survey data, looking at areas of communication, relationships, and learning strategies is extremely supportive. With 16 of the 21 responses, our parents, 100% of our parents agreed or strongly agreed, and the remaining six, they, 85% agreed or strongly agreed. So very supportive. Likewise, we're finding the same results with the staff survey we completed, looking at those same areas. In 18 out of 22 responses, 100% of the staff agreed or strongly agreed, and the remaining four, 85% agreed or strongly agreed. We're very happy to share those results in more detail when we have more time. Also, we just received the results from the state required conditions of learning survey. Our students had more favorable or equal responses in comparison to the state averages in all five areas measured. So we are very appreciative of the opportunity you've given us and your continued support in making this first year a success. As I'm sure you would expect, this success did not come easily. It was a year of charting a new course, often feeling like we were building a plane as it was flying. There were many things that were identified as needed, that had to be learned to meet expectations, and required everyone to work cooperatively, ensuring that all the needed Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. As the year went on, it felt we all, the DE staff and the Choice Charter School leadership, got better at this. It's with this in mind that really we are looking forward to another great year. More recently, and where we may need your help, is that we're trying to better understand how the Charter School Sustainability Group fits into our governance and oversight. We have asked who the members of this group are, and we have not yet received an answer. However, we believe it is made up by members of the State Board and the DE staff. We are hopeful that a practitioner, someone working in a charter school, would also be invited to be in this committee. Assuming that this group would be subject to open meeting laws, we have also asked for agendas and notes from this group. The reply we received was that the group was not subject to open meeting laws and we have not been provided the items requested. We have found this all more concerning is that in, at, and that on the afternoon of May 26th, we received a letter of direction from this group requiring us, and I'm going to give it in summary because of time, to provide a letter from an independent auditor documenting that Choice Charter School has policies and practices to ensure and reflect sufficient fiscal practices, including a list of specific items, and to also provide a letter from an independent attorney documenting that Choice Charter School has policies and practices sufficient to mitigate any conflicts of interest or appearance thereof. And again, a list of some very specific things. These directions were given with a deadline of June 30th, 2023, the end of the fiscal calendar. I want to be clear that while providing this information is not of a concern to us, what we are concerned about is that, number one, most of the items requested were already included in the initial application that's been approved, and many of the other items have previously been brought up in our monthly meetings already with DE staff. We have heard no further concerns or issues from DE staff that we've been working with. So we're a little confused as to why we're not using this collaborative process already in place to address any further concerns. Two, the requested items are already required as part of a regular audit that will be completed like all other school districts. So this action will result in both duplication of efforts and costs. So who is responsible for the costs in response to this directive, which is essentially another audit for us? As mentioned, the directive specifically calls out for an auditor to examine and provide a response to the requested information. Unfortunately, we've been unable to find an auditor for a regular audit. I've called over 25 people, they're short-staffed, we're a small district, so we're wondering why this directive was given, knowing this has been a challenge. So we had to reach out to the State Auditor's office and conversations with them.
You have 10 seconds.
10 seconds? They told us they would not be able to produce what was being requested in timeframe given. So I do want to mention that we do have a meeting with the director, all this tomorrow, and we look forward to discussing the concerns more and coming up with solutions together. I practiced, I thought it was four minutes. If I can add one comment from our student survey from one of our, from one of our parents.
Need to wrap it up.
Okay, I am. "We are so incredibly grateful for Choice Charter School and how our son is appreciated, valued, and celebrated for his hard work and success by all staff. Every staff member that he has worked with has helped embrace his uniqueness and build his self-confidence and self-esteem, as well as connect his learning skills he will use beyond high school. Words can't describe how life-changing him attending this school has been." So again, thank you for all the support. I'm sorry it went over, I practiced it. Usually I speak faster, but I spoke slower today. So again, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Corey.
Have a great meeting.
Is there any other public comment?
Good morning. If there's anyone in Zoom that would like to make a comment, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Otherwise, if you're calling in, you can press star nine on your phone to do so. And I do have one. It's Holly Calas Sullivan.
Hey, Holly.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you ready for me to start? I don't want to start before you're ready. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to hop in and say that my son has finished, successfully finished his first year at Choice Charter School, and it has been life-changing for him. We were fortunate enough that we were able to travel to the graduation. Obviously, he did not graduate yet as he's just finishing his freshman year, but he asked if we could travel over two hours to attend the graduation because he wanted to see all of the graduates, some that he had had some courses with, as well as meet more of the teachers and Dr. Knight, of course, the CEO and founder, and we were able to do that. It was amazing, to say the least. Every single student that received their diploma was successful and received specific words about them and their education and future plans, as well as, "And I'm proud of you," from Dr. Knight personally herself, something I've never felt, you know, happens at schools are so big anymore, that, you know, it's often that the person handing out the diplomas or speaking doesn't genuinely know each student individually, and it was obvious that Dr. Knight did, as well as the rest of the staff. My son was able to get pictures with everyone that was there, and it was an amazing way to end a successful school year. We, I cannot say enough good things about Choice Charter School. It has been, like I said, life-changing. My son said many times during the year, keep in mind finishing his freshman year, that this is the first time that he has felt successful and valued as a student since kindergarten and first grade. My son is twice exceptional, and our family has had health concerns since the COVID-19 pandemic that have started us online and then continued us online due to other health issues and just wanting the best school environment for my son. So while that's super happy on one hand, that he's so happy at Choice Charter, as a mom and a teacher, it makes me really sad that he hasn't had that since kindergarten and first grade. So I just wanted to take a moment and share with the board how grateful we are for the opportunity for Choice Charter School, and he is looking forward to finishing out his educational career here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any other public comment?
Thank you again. If you're just joining us, you can use the raise hand feature in Zoom to address the board, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine.
May I ask Corey a question?
Nobody, nobody else has comments at this time.
Okay, we will conclude the public comment. Mike, you had a question.
Corey, what do your projections look like for next year?
Well, we know we have to replace the 21 seniors that went out. We are undergoing a campaign to share about our school. We've not school counselors, so it's a little hard now to kind of judge what enrollment will be. The target number we have is 210 because we're budget neutral, but we certainly expect to be much higher than that. I'd be happy to come back and get more detailed numbers, but thank you for the question. But we know 210 is kind of a number for sustainability.
Appreciate any periodic updates.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Director's Report.
Good morning, everyone. Great to see all of you again. A month went really fast, but I'll give you a few highlights of some of the things the department's been working on. As you all know, the legislature ended, I guess the last day we were here was their last day, if I remember right. All bills have been signed by the governor. We are currently in the final editing stages of our annual letter to the education community, summarizing the legislative changes that were made to sort of give districts a good starting point for understanding the changes, because there were a lot of, there were a lot of education bills that passed this year. So that process is, that draft is well underway and should be going out in the, in the relatively near future. We're also have started the process with our teams and our education program consultants to craft guidance. You know, some things are self-explanatory, but some things need a little more, a little more explanation. So our teams are dutifully working on that, and it's one of our highest priorities because we know that districts need the support and, and clarity on some things when, when sometimes there are questions that still remain even after legislation. So that's being worked on. We're working on batches of guidance on Chapter 12 modifications, instructional transparency, parental consent, and students, those were some of the sort of the key issues that were discussed, that legislation was passed on this, this session, and there were a number of bills that touched them. So sometimes you had two different bills making changes related to the same issue, and I think that's, that's one of the most important areas where there needs to be guidance when, when there are different pieces of legislation that touch the same, touch the same statutes. As implementation continues, we'll continue to evaluate the need for additional guidance, take cues from not only the board, but from the field to sort of figure out what's, what's not clear and where we can be an additional resource. We also are beginning planning for a task force focused on at-risk students and at-risk programming that was required, that we were, the department's required to convene under Senate File 560. So that's, that's been a big part of the last month. So the, another thing that's been a big part, shifting gears a little bit, are education savings accounts. As we said last month, they were ready to be kicked off and the, we have, as I think we reported before, contracted with a third-party entity, Odyssey, to administer the program. Even with a third-party entity, this last month has taken a Herculean effort by the department's staff. So kudos to many of the new individuals and teams who've been very involved to try to launch a brand-new program. I've been incredibly impressed with the diligence, to the work, and the initiative that folks have shown, and just the persistence, because there's, there's a lot of new decisions and a lot of new things that need to be done when you create a program of this magnitude. Speaking of that, the application window opened on time on May 31st. It will close on June 30th. There were more than 10,000 applications received in the first 72 hours. So that was, as I said, there was, there was a lot of activity, a lot going on, and there were more than 1,000 applications received in the first 30 minutes. Show you exactly how quickly, and I'm pleased to say the, the computer did not, the computers did not crash, so, which sometimes when you have a big flood of applicants, that's, that's exactly what sometimes will happen. Accredited non-public schools and other education service providers will be added to Odyssey's system in the coming weeks. If you haven't read about it or looked into it in a lot of detail, it's going to be a closed marketplace, so all ESA dollars will be spent coming through the Odyssey marketplace, which should really boost accountability and, and minimize any, any waste fraud or abuse. Dollars will begin transferring into ESA accounts for approved students beginning on July 15th, and for some who apply closer to the deadline, there will be, or 30 days from when they're applying. So all those details are still being worked out. I'm going to highlight a couple of other issues as well. First off, alignment, you're going to have a separate discussion on that, where there's several entities, so former agencies that will now be joining the department beginning on July 1st. Mark Ford, our COO, will be presenting on that later. I just wanted to flag that that's been a really big focus of the department's work over the last month as well. Also, you'll be hearing from Dr. Briyanik about the extended comprehensive schools, sort of those targeted teams we sent out to the schools that have struggled for, for multiple years. And so I think you'll, I think you'll, it'll be a very engaging report you'll be hearing later, but those, those, all the visits are done, the reports have been written, and we're moving on to the next steps, which she'll, which she'll inform you all about later. Finally, a couple, two last things to mention. Title I waiver request. We put in, the department asked for a waiver from the federal government to allow schools, districts, excuse me, who had not spent all of their Title I funds to roll them over for next school year. Normally, you can roll over once in a three-year period, but because of all the federal dollars that came in, all the ESA, all the ESR dollars that came in, districts, sometimes some of them had a harder time spending all of their Title I dollars. So we've asked for additional flexibility, so fingers crossed that districts will be able to have a little more flexibility in another year to spend those dollars. Their Title I dollars, of course, are designed to serve our most disadvantaged students, so we want to, we don't want to leave any stone unturned if we can give our districts greater flexibility to use some of those funds that may be more spent. And then finally, I'm pleased to say the summer food program sites were announced this week and began serving students. There are over 500 approved sites around the state located in areas where there's the highest need, but all students are eligible to go there and, and have free lunches during the summer. So we've conducted a number of interviews with radio and television to, to make sure that the public knows about that and knows what a great resource it is for communities. So that's a, that's a taste and flavor of some of what the department's doing, and happy to answer questions if folks have them.
Sort of call up question with Title I funding. The DE gets some of that funding to help run the program. I'm assuming you're extending the flexibility request for the DE as well?
Our request was for districts. I, I have not talked to our CFO about this, but my, my sense is we've probably spent most of our Title I money in, in implementing the program, so I don't think, we, yeah, so I think we're set in that regard. But I appreciate you asking.
What happens to those funds if, if they don't, I guess, give a waiver?
If the waiver isn't granted, those dollars would revert back to the fed, federal government. And in some cases, I believe, and some of, in some districts, it's millions of dollars, and that's why we thought it was really important to make that request.
Is it just a waiver for one year?
It is, yeah. As I, as I sort of highlighted, in general, you can ask for a waiver once over three years, but some districts already had a waiver during COVID, so, and they were sort of given like an automatic waiver for, when they didn't spend funds, because it was, there were a lot of dollars flooding in, but now we noticed this year that some would lose because it couldn't go back to the feds and ask themselves, so we asked for a special state dispensation to, to do that, and that application is pending with U.S. Department of Education.
So timing is essential because I'm assuming the books close on June 30th?
I don't know if it's June 30th or September 30th, but.
So there, there's a little.
Yeah.
Wiggle on.
But now is the time for the request, so we, we hope that has acted on quickly because we want districts, of course, to be able to make good decisions with those dollars and, and spend them on the, the greatest needs in the community and not just spend them quickly to meet a, a time constraint. So we're hoping this will allow for the most efficient expenditure of funds that will be most directed towards students.
What happens to the money, Chad, that is not expended for the educational savings accounts? What happens to that money?
It's going to sit that, stay there in that pot and remain there.
So are you talking for the dollars that go to students? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so students will get up to $7,600, something like $3,800 per semester. The very first expenditure has to go to tuition and fees at an accredited non-public school. After that, any dollars remaining will be subject to be, will be available to be spent on the Odyssey marketplace by approved vendors. If they don't spend any, those dollars can roll to future years. So for instance, you'll, you'll probably see a lot of younger students, K through eight, where tuition tends to be lower than the $7,600, where they will save maybe $1,000 or $2,000 a year, and then when they get to high school, which tends to be more expensive than $7,600, many of them will have enough dollars in their accounts to, to be able to use them to pay high school tuition.
Good, good explanation. Thank you.
So it rolls over every, and that kind of accumulates into like a, okay.
Yeah, it stays in a protected account that can, again, only be spent for approved expenses through the Odyssey marketplace.
So when students are finished with their K-12 education and there's money left over, what happens?
That money reverts back to, to the state.
I was hoping you would say that. Any other questions for our director?
Well, I do have a comment. Our district does the summer lunch programs, and it's always wonderful. I was, we're out working and a bunch of kids were walking by with their lunches, and I just want you to know that our district and a lot of surrounding ones are very happy to have that and use it, and it's quite wonderful.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
All right. There's no other questions for our director, we'll move on. We have the consent agenda to approve in this May 4th, 2023. I move we approve the minutes of that meeting. Second. Move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign. Motion carried. All right. Rules, Chapter 14, Little Health Services.
So this is the last rulemaking that you will consider that was not subject to Executive Order 10, because of when it was initially noticed, and after this, I'll give you a brief update about the department's progress towards Executive Order 10 and when that work will start hitting your agendas. But this rule concerns student health, its response to three bills from last year's legislative session, allowing schools to have stock supplies of opioid antagonists, brand named Narcan, and not just for students, but for anybody in the school community who might be having an overdose event. The second bill allows, would allow schools to stock bronchodilators and for students who are having asthma events, respiratory events. And then the third bill added physician assistance to a certain list of duties that expanded to, certain duties to include physician assistance. Public comment closed in February, and we received some, two public comments, but both of which were quite substantial, and I've grouped their public comments, the, the themes into pages two and three of the adopted and filed rulemaking in your packet. The first one commenter asked nurse practitioners to be added to the list of physician assistance, and that might be a legitimate request, but it needs to go to the General Assembly. We are responding to legislation, the legislation was restricted to physician assistance. The second one commenter noted that a lot of the, the mechanics of the, the stock medication supply was specific to epinephrine auto-injectors, like the canisters of bronchodilator, like they're not clear canisters, but the epi pens are clear, you can check the, they'd need to be treated differently. So in response, Melissa Walker, my school nurse colleague, who actually knows what she's talking about, suggested to just follow the manufacturer's instructions, and that would be global, that would apply to both epi pens as well as the bronchodilator canisters. One commenter asked that there's a rule that, the current rule would allow privileges to self-administer medication to be withdrawn if that privilege is abused. If people are overusing their inhaler, I'm not having asthma, I don't understand that, but evidently that's a thing. One of the commenters asked that, that not be, that, that privilege not be withdrawn, that children need their medication in case of emergencies. Valid point, but the underlying language comes straight from the statute. So again, not something that the State Board can alter. One commenter asked that the medication administration course be every three years rather than every five years. That may or may not be valid, but the, the concern that, that content area experts had is the, the concern that's been expressed over the last couple of legislative sessions that staff are required to do too much training. Do a training on this, do a training on this, do a training on this, and five years has been the rule for many years. There's no public policy need to even consider it, so while it might be a good idea, it's worked in practice ever since the medication administration course was part of state, state administrative rule. So comfortable leaving it at five years, mindful of the fact that school staff are asked to take many, many trainings quite frequently anyway. The fifth big chunk of public comment involved suggestions that the State Board require or authorize the Board of Pharmacy or the Board of Public Health to write statewide or school-wide prescriptions for some of these stock medications. The state medical director write a stock order for all schools to. We don't, the, this board and the department do not have authority over the state medical director, so we directed the commenters either to the legislature or to other state agencies. Sixth comment concerned withdrawal of delegation. So a school nurse can delegate duties to trained unlicensed professionals, a par educator, for example. The commenter asked that that be more specific, like, specific language about when that authorization is withdrawn. The authorization includes supervision. Supervision includes the ability to put limits or, on or terminate, so the suggestion was unnecessary. If I can delegate, that implies the ability to take that delegation away, so there's no, no specific need to spell that out. Contacting emergency services. Right now, in the status quo rule, if an epi pen is administered, emergency services are contacted. One commenter asked, there should be some parallel for if an unexpected, there's an unexpected need to administer bronchodilator or asthma medication. And so the parallel for that would be as directed by the school nurse. So if somebody administers a stock bronchodilator, contact emergency services as directed by the school, the school nurse could make an assessment and say not necessary, but at least there's some responsibility parallel to an epi pen incident or an allergy incident to contact emergency services. And the last one comment, both commenters requested additional, greater detail about what type of prescriptions for stock medicine, and again, we're not the experts on prescriptions. We don't have the statutory. authority to require. That is better left to another state agency. So extensive public comment. We've made some changes in light of three of those eight general categories of public comment. So the department's recommendation is to adopt these amendments to Chapter 14. Any questions?
When, and you started to allude to this, but so let's say we pass this and there were comments, let's say however valid, maybe they were very valid, but they were outside our, our parameter of what we can do. What happens then? Are they, is this, I mean, this becomes part of the administrative code. Does the education committee look at what we're looking at right here? Or is it up to the nurse association or whoever makes comments to go to the legislature? Or just how do you complete the loop here?
A couple of pathways. First of all, through the executive order 10 process, which I'm talking to, these rules coordinators are talking shop with each other. Does this rule better fit in another state agency? Do state agency rules duplicate or overlap? So there's the natural, that will be native to the executive order 10 process. Second, whenever any state agency files either notice rules or final rules, those will be transmitted by the code editor and the rules coordinator to the various committees. So House and Senate Education Committee will see a copy of these rules, which will have been transferred forwarded by the code editor. Those are two, two ways. And the most efficient would always be for the commenters to read the comments and reach out to public HHS or reach out to the Board of Medicine and make those comments directly to them. Board of Medicine, Board of Pharmacy. But there are two, there are two safety valves where these comments will get into the, at least into the inbox, if not to the attention of, at least in the inbox of folks who can act on things that the department and the board can't.
Is that controversy between PAs and MPs bleed over into this? Conflict in terms of what they can do?
I, I think there might be between physician assistants and nurse practitioners, but the Physician Assistant Association lobbied for the bill that directed the department to adopt rules to allow physician assistants to do things. So good idea, bad idea, conflict between two, two types of licensed and learned professionals. That may be all well and good, but it's not something that, it's not something that we could respond to.
Doesn't create a problem for us.
It does not create a problem because we're responding to the legislation.
Thank you.
After clarification, Thomas, then each district is responsible to find a physician to, to give the prescription? How do they stock it without a prescription if it's not state done?
That would be a local decision, a local prescriber, whoever has the authority to prescribe. Based on just the, different classes of medication have different classes of prescribers. I think the opioid antagonists, a larger class of people, emergency responders, and others can authorize schools to acquire. But it, it would be more efficient if the state medical director, the board of pharmacy would write a statewide prescription to all 327 schools and all the non-pubs. But absent that, it is each school district who elects, these aren't requirements, but who elects to do this, elects to adopt these policies and stock these medications. It would be on that district's responsibility or that school, non-public school's responsibility to acquire its own prescription.
Thank you. Any other questions for Thomas?
Make a motion to approve the rulemaking as presented.
Second, a motion to approve or adopt.
Or I'm sorry, adopt.
It's been seconded. Any further comments? Hearing none. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you have the same sign. Motion's carried. Rules are adopted. All right.
I'll be very brief in a summary of Executive Order 10 and just sort of storyboarding out your work over the next four board meetings, August, when we'll probably need a December meeting. The department has completed an analysis of 12 of its 63 rules chapters. I feel like we're behind, but we're ahead of other state agencies. In that analysis, the word count of those chapters has gone from 40,000 words to 11,000. And we've eliminated dozens of obsolete rules, dozens of requirements that nobody, like why do we even collect these data anymore? Why do we even require this policy anymore? This hasn't been necessary or done in schools since Captain Crunch was a lieutenant. Why are we doing this? So that's, it's been a valuable exercise. Those rules will be on your, those 12 rule chapters will be on your August agenda. And those 12 rules chapters that deal with the mechanics of running a department, rulemaking, appeals, declaratory orders, waiver requests. More substantively, the rules on veterans' education have been reviewed, national board certified teacher subsidies have been reviewed, charter schools consolidating a large number of, eliminating a large number of obsolete rules because we're no longer taking applications under the legacy statute. So why do we need application rules and criteria under the legacy statute? The two charter rule chapters, the department will be proposing to consolidate because there's, there's just a lot of overlap. And preschool, the statewide voluntary preschool team has completed their review of their rules. So those will be on your August agenda and roughly about 15 rule chapters per meeting. Some rules will be moving to other state agencies and there's a, a time passing process. But the department will, at least before handing those rules over to the other state agencies to, will review those rules. But roughly 15 rules packages at the notice stage per board meeting for the, for the rest of the year. If they're non-controversial, I'll try to either group them onto the consent agenda or group like, like rules together, like the administrivia, rulemaking waivers, things that only lawyers care about. Maybe that will be one package, one item. And more substantive rules, charter schools, preschool, might have dedicated agenda time to discuss. But that's how I see this process and your very important work in it over the next five and a half months.
So, so you have to give notice of the changes and then public comment on the changes? How's this going to work out?
There will be a pre-notice public comment and then notice of intent. So the department has to solicit public comment through a public regulatory analysis. So the rules that the department has just finished analyzing. That analysis will go out for public comment. We will consider the public comment to that analysis and integrate that into the notice of intended action that comes to the board. At least for this process, for every rules chapter, there will be required public hearings, multiple public hearings per rule chapter. And then after, after that, it will look like the same, the same process at the adopted and filed stage.
So do we have to approve the notice?
The board does not have to approve the pre-notice public comment. It's, there are two, two touch points per rule chapter for the board, notice of intended action and adopted and filed. The governor's executive order 10, put more work onto the department before it ever gets to you, for agency staff, before it ever gets to you, but it will get to you in the same process, notice of intended action and then adopted and filed.
The Board of Educational Examiners, that board still exists?
It will still exist.
And are they doing some of these 63 chapters too? Or how does that work?
They have about nine chapters and they are next year.
That's not fair.
Yeah. They're next year.
Okay.
And so they're.
So we're not overlapping. They have theirs, we have ours.
They, they may, since we'll be part of a broader umbrella agency, they may borrow some of our rules chapters if they suit their needs and incorporate them by reference. But they have their own schedule and their own, their own rulemaking authority.
They don't need to come through this process?
Correct. Well, they'll go through this process, but they won't come through the state board.
Yes.
CNE will continue to make its, will continue to notice and adopt rules.
Okay. But they don't need to come through the state board. Okay. Gotcha.
So they'll be operating independently through this building? Is that it?
At, at least at the, at least at the rulemaking stage and then contested cases. So they will continue to hear contested cases against licensed practitioners. So they will continue to exist for those functions. I think Mark Ford will better be able to explain, like the rest of the stuff that the Board of Educational Examiners and College Student Aid Commission will do. All, right now I can tell you, they'll retain their own rulemaking authority and their rules will not come, will not come through the State Board of Education.
To the extent your question was, I'm sorry.
Okay.
To the extent your question was broader than rulemaking authority, the Board of Educational Examiners will be a part of the Department of Education. We will work together. We will be one integrated agency. And so the same will be true for STEM, which will become part of the Innovation Division and Iowa School for the Deaf, IES, DDI, and Iowa College Aid. So all of those will be part of the department. We will be integrated in a lot of our functions where we have crossover, where like accounting and, and IT supports and stuff. So we'll be, we will be continuing to seek efficiencies and making sure the department runs as, as well and as smoothly. And we can gain some of the efficiencies that were, that were thought about as the law was passed for the alignment.
But, yes, yes, all of that, but making contested cases, the Board of Ed Examiners and College Student Aid retain their own authority, their boards retain their own authority. STEM does not currently have rulemaking authority. Their rules are made by the Board of Regents. So any STEM necessary rules or ISD necessary rules will come through, come through the state board.
Can you give us an explanation, Thomas, of who makes these decisions? Who's your committee or group that's meeting to review these? Just a.
So the content area folks have let me know what rules are obsolete. So the, the charter school folks let me know that these are obsolete rules, or they've responded to my questions, are these rules still necessary? The things that only lawyers care about, I just did with, in consultation with some of my job alikes at other state agencies. But the more substantive, substantive rules chapters, the content area experts are the ones who are at least making the initial recommendations.
And these are passed through you, you though, and then you kind of flesh it out?
Yeah. And there's a back and forth about, you know, Governor Reynolds has some specific direction for state agencies. So there's back and forth through this process. We, we want to keep this rule, but, but how does that rule, how do you justify keeping it under Executive Order 10? So there's back and forth between me as the project manager of this process, this department's rules coordinator, and the content area experts and their leaders.
Very good. Thank you, Thomas.
I would just like to say that Thomas has been held up as like the gold standard for this rulemaking process, at least for our agency. We go to him all the time with questions. So, so happy you guys had to go first. Thank you for all your hard work.
So I do know that another state agency has complained to the governor's office about the burden of revising their two chapters.
That's hilarious.
I'm just gonna leave that there. An unnamed state agency.
Wow, I knew who that was.
Which will remain anonymous at this time.
Yeah. That's, that's really funny.
We do have Indian Hills Community College. You guys ready?
Well, good morning. I think I know most of you, but my name's Amy Gieske. I'm the Bureau Chief for Community Colleges. Today we have your third and final accreditation visit for the year. It's a comprehensive visit at Indian Hills Community College. So I also have Heather Meisen, who is a co-lead on accreditation with me to help answer questions. And then please to introduce President Matt Thompson and Vice President Jill Buddy. They're going to be giving a presentation after I give a brief overview of our report. So looking forward to bringing for both of you and thank you for making the trip today. So you should have the full report in front of you. So I'll just give a brief overview. Starting first with the institutional profiles. You can see the region Indian Hills serves and some stats about, you know, the students that they're serving and how it compares to the other 14 colleges in the state. Indian Hills ranked sixth in joint enrollment and credit awards, 10th in non-credit, 11th highest graduation rate, and 12th in transfer. As you know, our accreditation process looks at their Higher Learning Commission, most recent Higher Learning Commission report, and Indian Hills does have continued accreditation with reaffirmation of accreditation in 2930. At their last visit, core component four B was met with concerns. So we talked a little bit about that with them during the visit. This is the core component around the assessment of student learning. A lot of colleges are working particularly on assessment with co-curricular activities. So stuff that's happening outside of the classroom. So that's something that Indian Hills is working through. They did do an interim report and HLC found that they had demonstrated adequate progress on the concerns that HLC had. I would say at our visit, we noticed significant progress in this area. They selected this as their special topic. So at comprehensive visits, the college can select a topic that they want to chat more about with colleges from, other colleges from across the state. They share best practices about what everyone's doing in the space. So Indian Hills selected this as their topic, also as their topic for their HLC quality initiative. So it was clear to us that they're putting significant time, attend, and energy into this topic and have made really good progress. So overall, a really good report from HLC. Moving to the state standards, taking the first two faculty qualifications and LOE together. The majority of their faculty were well qualified and teaching within LOE limits. They have a strong process for ensuring that professional licenses are up to date in the files. So our recommendations in this area were more around process. There were some documents not in files. Some faculty were teaching prefixes that were not on the qualifications form. And Indian Hills is actually adopting a new software that's going to help a lot in this area. So I'm confident that at our next visit, this will be even, the files will be even cleaner than they were at this visit. But just a few recommendations around that to ensure faculty are indeed qualified for the prefixes they're teaching. And then one recommendation around formalizing independent study, how that calculated, was calculating to LOE was a little different across campus. So just a small recommendation there. No findings in this area. The third standard is special needs, how they help serve protected classes. I'd say this is a, how they serve students in general is a major strength for the college. They have a very clear complaint process. They're spending significant energy and resources on mental health, which we really appreciated seeing. They have Google Translate available everywhere for students who speak multiple languages, an early alert process. So we, the faculty and staff will know quickly if there's a student in need. And speaking with students, it was clear that they knew where to go to for help. They felt a sense of belonging, a sense of safety. So we always really enjoy speaking with students and the students that we spoke to at Indian Hills had a lot of really positive things to say about the institution. A few recommendations in this area, one about the short nondiscrimination statement. Colleges don't always know that you can use a short statement so that the text isn't quite so tiny. So a recommendation there. And then a recommendation around using a locked syllabus. There were differences in nondiscrimination statements and accommodation statements in the syllabi. So there's some strategies to help ensure consistency there. Some inconsistencies in the nondiscrimination statement. So we're just going to follow up in a few months to make sure that those statements are consistent across campus. I would say an area of real strength is standard for CTE program evaluation. They do an excellent job in this area. Very strong onboarding process to make sure that faculty doing program review understand the process and how to work through the process. Their program review template is very strong. They had a number of threads for increasing the enrollment of underrepresented students in their CTE programs. At the last visit, we had recommended At the last visit, we had recommended to standardize the program review using a rubric, and they had done that. They took a lot of our recommendations from the past visit and had implemented that. So we really, really appreciated seeing that. And I think speaks to the quality of their process. Also, their program faculty are very involved in their strategic planning through program review. Very nice to see that link between program review and strategic planning. A few recommendations here just to help strengthen the program. One around proportionate cost, which is a requirement to include. We suggested they consider ways to formalize how they speak about general education, which will help with that core component 4B with HLC. They have strong advisory committees, but a few strategies to strengthen that even further. They had recently implemented a agenda template to make sure there's robust conversation at those. And that wasn't happening consistently with all committees. So just a recommendation to make sure that that's happening. But no findings in this area. Another area of strength, physical plant facilities. No recommendations or findings at all here. One change they had made was to move that capital improvement process to align with program review, which is excellent. So now during program review, the departments and programs identify physical plant needs that they have, and that will flow right into the capital improvement process. They have very strong emergency response plans, strong focus on security and safety, a number of examples of investments that they had made in that space, and strong ADA compliance. So overall, doing a lot of wonderful things in this area. The next two are areas of strengths for you all. Strategic planning, some of the best that I've seen during our visits. So they, they have a plan in place. They have three key strategic priorities: student success, economic vitality, and community engagement. They track their different strategies related to their plan really well. They have key metrics in place, substantial stakeholder input. They use a great deal of survey data when developing their strategic plan. And they found out how to really push the planning process down to the different departments through this plans for excellence models, what they have. But you really feel that people across campus are very engaged with strategic planning through the process that senior leaders have set up. So excellent work in that area. Quality faculty plan as well. I would think their quality faculty plan is again, one of the best that I've seen in the state. It's not just a document to meet the state standard. They're very intentional about using it to drive improvements in instruction. Their committee actually has substantive conversations around faculty development. They have impressive, robust new faculty onboarding process. They outline competencies that they want all their instructors to have, and those are detailed in the QFP. And they develop professional development to point faculty towards those competencies. And then they did receive a Title III grant recently to fund a teaching and learning center. It was really fun to tour that teaching and learning center and see how that, the work of that center is driving improvement in the classroom. And then we're also using that to fund the new hiring system that's going to handle or help improve some of the faculty qualifications documentation issues. So great to see that that grant is already working well for the college. A small recommendation here on what we might be able to do to help adjunct faculty onboarding, which is, that's a group that, you know, sometimes doesn't get as much attention as they could use. The eighth standard is senior year plus. A lot of wonderful, wonderful things happening in this space as well. One thing to highlight is their live virtual learning Zoom rooms that they've built in all of their partnering school districts, their 19-area high schools, so that students can live time zoom into classes that are happening at the campus. Really fun project that I'm sure they might be able to tell you more about. They use a dual enroll system to help in concurrent enrollment. That's a best practice. And a well, a very well-established instructor onboarding for concurrent faculty. A few small recommendations in this space. Adding a section to the site visit form to help with follow-up. If there's a concern at the site visit, what are you doing about that concern? And how are you closing the loop? Adding some language around non-compliance policy to some of their materials. And then we had a discussion about FERPA, making sure the materials were clear around who has the FERPA rights. We had some questions about that, so walked through that with them. One finding in this area related to setting higher enrollment standards for concurrent students than the traditional students. And this happened almost inadvertently, you know, unintentionally. There were a program that had a higher GPA requirement than the traditional students, which you can't do. And then a couple of classes that said students had to be juniors or seniors to take them. And we can't put any barriers to enrollment. So the colleges already, they addressed that immediately, I think, the day we mentioned it to them. So the last item, this is not a standard, but we do look at the college's catalog compared to our state curriculum system and had a recommendation around how they're describing their transfer majors, just because there was a slight issue there to address. Overall themes for the visit, it's very clear to us that the college is committed to student success, and they take a lot of pride in that commitment to student success. They have a strong culture of continuous improvement. We had just an excellent visit where we identified issues. The college is very open to hearing ways, looking for ways to improve the work that they're doing. They have strong collaborative connections with their community, others across the campus. And their strategic priorities clearly drive their work. And they really do a good job of tying their strategic planning processes together. So overall, excellent visit. We really appreciated having some time to spend with them. And the review team does recommend reaccreditation of Indian Hills through the next visit. Before we move to that, I will hand over it.
Sure.
Thanks to Matt.
Yeah, good morning, and thanks for having us. This is the third time that I've been in this room with the board since being at Indian Hills Community College. First time in the role as president, and it is a very dynamic time in higher education. It's a very dynamic, dynamic time in education overall, based on some of the conversations you all are having right now. And I would say the same thing at Indian Hills Community College. I started in 2013 as the academic vice president, the role that Jill, Dr. Buddy, has now. And I've continuously seen things that have really kept me excited about being at Indian Hills Community College and serving South Central and Southeast Iowa. One of the major things I would share with you that we have happening right now, and it's exhausting, but it's a lot of fun and it makes a huge difference for the future. And that is, back in 2016, we went to the voters across our 10-county region for a bond referendum, and it failed miserably. Forty-four point nine percent yes vote. And we really invested time and resources in different locations across our region where we felt like maybe we need to be more engaged. And in 2020, I became president. It was an interesting time to take over, but it was also a great opportunity to really look at how we had leveraged strengths across our region. And as we planned to go back out to the voters, my board said to me during my interview, you're going to go back out. We, we really had, we were at a point in time where we were completing our strategic plan, and we were making connections to how do we have engagement with our community? How do we continue to be an economic driver within our region? How do we have student success? Those were our three priorities. And how do we tie that together to go out to the voters and really talk about who we are and what we do and why we do it? And how, what we do can leverage the future in Southern Iowa? And so we were really happy on November of 2021 to go back to the voters during a general election and pass the bond referendum with a 73.2% yes vote. And I would just say that I think we learned a lot from our, our experience in 2016. We did reengage in some different areas. We had a 5% yes vote in Lucas County, which would be Sheraton. It'd be the furthest away from our main campus and Centerville campus. We did some work there. We've got a great couple of programs that are in Sheraton now. They came and voted 66% yes during a general election, which was awesome. And so those, that investment now has also leveraged a lot of private funding. So we've raised $11.1 million to complete projects. We've received grants from the Career Academy Incentive Fund through the Department of Education for a great new regional center for students that are in high school, along with our college students in Centerville, Iowa. So we are midway through construction in Centerville for a brand-new 66,000-square-foot facility that will really address the workforce needs in that region of our 10-county area. From healthcare to welding technology to a new CDL program, we're excited about what's happening in that community and that surrounding communities. We are getting ready to kick off a performing visual arts addition and renovation of a facility that hasn't been touched since probably the 1960s. We were able to put the live virtual classrooms in all 19 school districts. So we think about accessibility and, and distance from a college campus shouldn't make a difference to opportunity. And so we addressed that. When we could see in, in the numbers of enrollment, the further away you were from our main campuses, the less likely you would take college credit while at high school. And so going out to all 19 school districts, we are rent-free. So please don't remind our superintendents, but they've given us all space in our, in their buildings. And we've said, we'll take the corner of a library, we'll take a conference room, we'll take a classroom, whatever you can afford to provide in the hills. We want to bring the equipment in, we want to set this up. And so we're now one year in. We've seen some great growth in that area and see more, I think, this year. And so it's just, it's been a lot of fun. You know, there's a lot of great partnership. Our business and industry, like I said, has stepped up to support us. When we went to the voters, the projected cost for projects was $34.7 million. It's close to 50 now, just with inflation and everything else. So we continue to go out and really talk about the value we bring to the businesses that we supply a workforce, and, and they have responded unbelievably. So I'll just stop there and maybe let Jill talk about the visit itself and then take some questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, and I'll just, I'll go into a little bit of maybe piggybacking some of what Amy talked about. We really had a fantastic visit with our, our partners from the Department of Ed. As Amy had noted, one of the things that we learned in our 2019 HLC reaccreditation was the opportunity to continue to grow our, our co-curricular assessment process. And that was well underway in the beginning stages of, of the work when, when the DE was there this, this winter with us. We have adopted a new assessment, online assessment process using a software called Spole. And the interesting part in co-curricular assessment, so our residence hall folks, some of our athletics coaches and the different areas across our campus with student life, didn't realize that they're doing assessment, but they are. And so helping educate them through our different processes with the academic faculty that they work alongside every day and with our institutional research office, getting them to understand and see how important it is to document process of assessment so that they can then use that data and make decisions on what they do with students and how they interact with students in all aspects of their, of their college career with us at Indian Hills. And so that really has rolled us into our next, our quality initiative with the Higher Learning Commission. We have a four-year assurance reaccreditation, a desk visit, or a desk audit that will happen in January of 2024. So we are working on that. And that will roll right into our quality initiative, which is reassessing general education. And we know that across our campus, when we say the words "general education", people think of English, math, history. And they don't think about what general things, what institutional learning outcomes do we need to have for students in every aspect of how they participate in their college experience with us. And so we have a really diverse group from across our campus in all different departments that are working on the language that we use and moving away from what traditionally folks might think of as GenEds, as courses, to whatever we're going to call them, institutional learning outcomes, essential learning outcomes. That'll be part of our quality initiative and our discovery process. And it's been really fun to put folks from different departments that don't normally interact and talk about some of these things to think and talk about how an academic program and an athletic program really are working toward the same ultimate goal for a student. And how, you know, asking the questions of, if a student participates in X number of student life activities, does it affect their academic success? And so there's a lot of those fun questions being asked, and answers are starting to come forward. And so we're seeing a lot of aha, aha moments in, in that work. And that's been a whole lot of fun. As far as things like our, some of our antiquated systems, I would say Amy was really nice about. We had, we had a lot of files, paper files. And so, you know, moving from those old paper files and the college investing in different software opportunities that can make us much more efficient are going to only help us with things like our faculty credentialing. So those things are starting. It's about a five-component process. We're in component number three of that implementation of that NeoEd software system that not only will start the person at their employee lifecycle with onboarding and how they apply to us as an institution, but then it will be the repository for their professional development. There's an opportunity for us to put PD in that space so that they can go access that asynchronously, if that's what they need to do. And then our Teaching and Learning Center, which is just an actual, an absolute gem for us, has the opportunity to go in and put some of those different opportunities in and then, and then put those into the system. Right now, a person has to call HR and say, how many hours do I have toward my PD for this year? They don't have access to that. And so by the end of June, we'll be fully implemented with that program. So people can go in, sign on one spot. They can see their annual evaluation process. They can see their credentials. They can see all those things. And it's just eventually, by the time it's all done, it's just going to be fantastic. So we're really, really looking forward to that. The same is true that we are investing in a syllabus management system. So again, a very antiquated, you know, if I'm a professor, I may teach the same course every single fall, and so I just reuse my syllabus. I didn't update a nondiscrimination statement. An administrative assistant would have to double-check every single paper syllabus. And then at the end of the term, electronically file that in some random file cabinet. And so this system that's under implementation right now this summer, we will, we will roll out in the fall. We'll create a standardized documentation for a syllabus template. Many, many other institutions use a system like this. Not only does that help for compliance with what needs to be in a syllabus and consistency for the students and the faculty, but it also helps us for students after their graduation or when they go to transfer, is that we have a much more consistent repository for those folks to be able to move on and easily grab anything that they need for, for that opportunity. And then the last couple of things that I'll just address quickly. We knew that going in, that the nondiscrimination statement, because it lives in so many different places, that that would be an area that we were going to have opportunity to improve. And so we do have, in, in July, we will have a brand-new website overhaul that no longer has individual pages or people that have to stick that in the right spot, but rather a widget where the nondiscrimination statement lives in one spot, and then it is only copied individually with that widget. So only one place it gets changed. And so that'll, that'll really remedy that situation. But yeah, again, a manual process that obviously errors are created when 15 different people are using 15 different, different things. And then just finally, really excited about the compliments that we had gotten from DE on the changes that we had made to our program review process that lends itself right into our capital improvement process. We do have a fairly new CFO at our institution. And so we have been working really closely on budgeting alignment and helping make sure that our individuals in different program areas know and understand the different budgeting tools that they have and what they have so that they can make sure that they have materials and supplies for the different courses that they have, understand what they've spent, where they've spent it, what they still have left, and then have a much more robust request process so that they feel like they have some more autonomy in helping control what's available to them through the budgeting process. And so that's something that we have expanded upon in our program review documentation, but from a day-to-day practice, have a plan in place that's really going to, I think, help overall people understand and know where they are and what they have moving for that. So like Amy had shared, our senior year plus, where, where a couple of those little things, we were like, wait, what does that say? And so we were able to remedy those that day. And so that was, that was a non-issue. Fortunately, the timing was really good because we were preparing new documentation for the upcoming fall term with the new school year anyway. So it really just worked out really well from a timing perspective. But ultimately, we really enjoy the guidance and appreciate everything we get from our partners at the department. We are in constant contact. Did you say that's fair? If weekly is constant, we're in pretty constant contact. And so I always appreciate an accreditation process. It helps us grow and learn and always continue to, to be better and do better. So that's all.
I would just say that, you know, we're, I think, as community colleges across the state, we're very responsive to the needs of our regions. And so when we have feedback in a visit, we're responsive as well because we really want to continuously get better and, and, you know, be the best that we can for our students and the communities that we serve. So thank you very much for, for your role in education in Iowa. And we take any questions that you might have.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, if I can. Kudos recognizing in 2020 what happened to your bond issue. And recommendations maybe moving forwards. I think that most of these institutions, including our K-12, you get so involved in the work that you're doing and serving your students and making sure that you're in compliance with everything you're required to be in, that you forget to tell your communities, your economic development organizations, and your businesses and your industries, what you're doing to enhance their opportunities for further attraction for employees and workforce development. So keep that up on a regular and consistent basis. And I think that next time you go for another bond issue- And I think that next time you go for another bond issue, that, that spotlight will already be there.
You know, and I would just say that we visit all 10 counties in the farm bureaus and we are continuing to do that now. It's good for our, our ag program. You know, we saw, we've seen a bump in ag enrollments since the bond referendum. And I think a lot of it was we were out communicating with people that had a vested interest, but maybe didn't know enough and they were hugely supportive of the referendum. So thank you.
Yeah, and I would say too, those virtual learning environments, I mean, wow, unnecessary obviously during pandemic, but also just for the access for those schools that are farther, as you said, and then start creating that affinity for those students to continue on. And I will say that Indian Hills is active with the Iowa Business Council Education Alliance. And so learning from others, but one of only two, and the other community college is DMAC. So representing one of the rural counties, your businesses, I think continues to be a priority for me. So again, compliment you on that.
Thank you. Yeah, not only the businesses, I failed to mention one of our projects. We will have a grand opening of our criminal justice training facility in July, and we will also apply to become a level two law enforcement academy through the Iowa Law Enforcement Academies here in July, and that'll go before the board in August. So we're, we, we just, we hear continuously from our rural areas that law enforcement training needs to be accessible outside of Des Moines. And so we are positioned in a great location to do that and serve not only our 10 counties, but beyond that in that capacity. So, you know, I'm saying my prayers that we get approved, but we think it's the right thing to do for law enforcement and that was a huge part of our bond referendum as well.
But baseball against Indian Hills Community College in 1964.
Did you really?
You got three hits that night.
Tell us, you said you had some unique ways of attracting people, not our minority groups to CTE programs. Can you talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so several different things that, that we're working through. We, we have purposefully, we have a very large population of Spanish-speaking individuals in our community. We have a, a large pork processing plant. And so there are about 43 different languages spoken at that business. They process 28,000 hogs a day. So if that gives you any context as to the size, the size of that business, but really engaged very, very purposefully in making sure that we have bilingual individuals in Spanish and then have a lot of website options that's, that can translate our information into nearly all of those different languages. But we have had Latino step on days. And so purposely putting things in Spanish for parents and really helping make sure that parents understand the college-going process. We know that many of our students have spoken English for a fair amount of time, but their parents may not. And so have shifted our focus a little bit to the parental support. And we have found that that really has helped a student articulate their wants and needs if the parent can better understand what it means to go to college. We know that there are some misconceptions that you, we can't afford to go to college. Our family doesn't do that, we can't afford that, and not understanding all of the resources available. And so we are in the, in the low socioeconomic area of the state that we are in with, you know, we've got counties in the 90-plus as far as the bad side of, of being disadvantaged. We are really good at brading together different funding sources and opportunities for the students and the families that we serve. And so we have invested a lot of time, resources and personnel in making sure that we have folks that can articulate those opportunities to families and parents and then really have a lot of different step onto campus ideas and opportunities. We also go out to those school districts a lot. We have engaged with the College and Career Transition Coach Program that's going on now. We just had a local community foundation fund us for two additional full-time positions using the model that, that we are using through the additional state funding that we have. And so we're really seeing a lot of growth in that. One of those individuals is a Spanish-speaking individual that currently is employed. But having that one-on-one and in the school opportunity, we still don't have all of our 19 districts covered by that program, but we certainly see some growth opportunity with that. There was one more thing I was going to say.
Yeah, I would just say, so with that College and Career Transition Coach position, we had a pilot last year with Atuma School District. We had, we usually have 50 to 55 students from Atuma's senior class enroll in Indian Hills full-time when they graduate. That jumped to 88 students this past year. And we attribute a lot of that to having somebody boots on the ground, talking with students. As you all know, school councils are overburdened with so many things, mental health being a huge component. Having somebody there to talk about college and careers and what they can do is huge. And, and we're not just talking about what happens in Indian Hills, we're talking about the region's universities, other two-year colleges, what makes them a student. And that's, that's the key to success, I think, in growing all enrollment, including our more diverse populations.
One of those CCTCs is also at our, at our alternative school in Atuma, which is the Atuma Gateway Center. And so again, that tends to be a more diverse population of students for us, perhaps students whose families have not had the opportunity to have higher education. And so having a person in that role as well has really helped. Number one, give them access in high school to opportunities while they're in high school, but then help them think on their pathway beyond high school and what they're going to do. I was going to mention work-based learning has been something that we have adopted very heavily at Indian Hills and are really growing the opportunity. We're using a little bit of Perkins funding to help with a position and we're using the Title III grant to also help with a position that really focuses on tying together what we do with our business solutions department and the workforce development that we're doing and the academic side of the house with the courses, programs and certificates that we have to get kids into, students into different work-based learning arenas. So really fun, real quick, we had a student who was interested in history, well, what's your, what's your job going to be someday? You know, ultimately, we all want them to go work at some point and not be a perpetual student. And so giving him the opportunity to explore some different career opportunities, thinking about, well, maybe I could work with the Historical Society, I could maybe work with the city. He ended up doing a work-based learning opportunity with the Iowa Historical Connections Museum and has worked there ever since, on and off, has now graduated, but has a pathway and a plan of what he wants to do with his life. So it's easy for us to think about the career and technical education, skilled trades, healthcare opportunities, but those students that have other interest areas and really focusing on how do we get those kind of lost souls to understand if I do this, these are my options and here's my path, what I could do next, so.
Just one other coming up. Thank you, thank you for your answer. Very, very appreciate it. So it's important to me that, that we continue to look at work-based learning in terms of education, how can we develop teachers, associate teachers into certified teachers? And I just think that's a, that's a critical thing that we need to be doing in, in all of our community colleges. And I like what's beginning to happen. Just to comment on that one, and I promise that I'll be there.
Now, make a quick, make a quick comment. We want to keep you guys on track. So yeah, we actually, we have now with the transfer major of education, we can now track who those students are that have an interest in education. And in fact, I have a, I have a group of students that we provide a scholarship to and then they meet with me throughout the year. It's kind of a grow your own leadership opportunity. One of the young men came up to me late in the year and said, man, I really want to teach for Atuma Schools. And I said, that's awesome. And he said, I'm going to stay home, I'm going to go through and he's going to take classes through either University, which is on our campus, or through Northern Iowa, which we have a relationship with. And so I said, you want to be a para while you're doing that? And he says, I'd love to. So I called the school district and said, hey, here's a person and he is Spanish, from a Spanish-speaking home. Here's a young man that wants to stay here, work here, do you have an opportunity? And they said, yes. Send him to us.
That's just critical.
Yes.
Then we can begin to identify those kids and encourage them by paying them while they're, they're getting experience in the classroom.
Hundred percent. Yeah. And there's more stories like that.
Yeah, we're having great conversations across all of our districts with how they can get kids their parent educator even while they're toward the end of their high school career, keep them in the building right after high school and then, and move, move them forward in their education.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Well, you have a recommendation from Amy.
I move, we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign. Oh, should carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
All right, Northwestern College Educator Association report.
Good morning, I'm Kelly Fega and I'm part of the Ed Prep team here. And I also have Dr. Teekip with me and Dr. Mary Rod Zabel, who are also part of the Ed Prep team. And they did participate in the site visit as well. And we also have Gary Richardson on Zoom with us, who's going to be doing a little presentation today for us as well. And he will introduce his team when we get to his presentation. So I'm just going to talk through a little bit about the process and kind of what we go through when we start with our team. And just a little reminder about we have the six standards that we go through. Northwestern actually has additional standards because they have an admin program and they also have a counseling program, a brand new counseling program. And so they had some additional standards that we reviewed. So a little bit about the process, we do start about two years in advance with them. We put them into a cohort, which works really well because we bring in other prep programs and they're able to bounce ideas off of each other too in that cohort. And so we have monthly meetings with them where we can review kind of where they should be at, we can talk about the, the tools and the things that they need from us to make sure that they are following a rigorous process. One of the things that they do is they do a self-study, so they really take a very close look at their program. And this seems to be really instrumental in them writing a very good institutional report for us. It also kind of helps them find the holes before we get there. And so a lot of things then are taken care of even before we get there. And if not, they at least are aware of them saying, this is what we're going to do to make sure that we have this in place. And they write an institutional report with that. We also include lots of surveys and so we do have the stakeholders and we survey all those stakeholders, students, graduates, adjunct faculty, faculty, so their advisory committee. And so we get all that feedback too. And Dr. Teekip's been kind of instrumental in taking those surveys and really doing kind of a qualitative study and going through and looking at those and, and finding those themes. And that's going to helpful to our process as well. But Northwestern to start out with, I'll talk a little bit about their strengths and then I'll go into each of the standards and tell you what we found, kind of like what Amy did. But really, I would give a big shout out to Gary and then also Derek because they were instrumental in this process. And, and you can tell they're really strong leaders, they're very passionate about what they're doing and they really want to produce great educators. And so they, they were a great part of this process. But some of the things that we saw when we got on campus, first of all, just the general or the genuine culture of belonging and that they really made everybody on campus feel included. And we could see that through our student interviews, through our faculty interviews, through our administrative interviews. But you could tell that they felt comfortable on campus. And a lot of times what they would say is they would say, what I like about being here is my relationship with the faculty. And so the students would say this. And so they would say, you know, I feel like they follow me when we have concerns, I know who to go to. And so we, we really give them a big pat on the back for continuing those relationships that we know in education are really important. And so, and then something else that stood out to us was that faculty, they intentionally modeled, modeled purposeful advocacy for inclusion. One of the programs that they have is called the NEXT program. And that's where they allow students who have intellectual disabilities to take coursework like an introduction to education. So they're actually in the classroom with a lot of future teachers. And what's really unique about it is as I was in interviews, I watched those future teachers give that student an extra helping hand. So if there was a question they didn't understand, they were automatically trying to include them in that environment and making sure that they understood. So that was a neat program. They also have another program that's an ESL program where they work with ESL students as well. So tons of opportunities there. And they do have placements where they put them, you know, right, right in their community, but also in urban settings and communities where they have higher rates of poverty. And then they also have a large international community as well. They have a strong system of support for their instructors and their candidates and more on that onboarding when you're coming in. And for those of you, if you've ever taught, you know, some of that is the biggest piece when you walk into that classroom and you don't have the right tools, they are very intentional to make sure you have the right tools so you have that first successful year when you get there. So real strong mentors and leadership coaches. And then the other big pat on the back we'll talk a little bit about is their new counseling program. And this is really a heavy lift to have a new counseling program and getting the right people in place. And we definitely recognize that they're working really hard to do that. And I'll talk some about that when we talk about the standards as well. But the first standard that I'll talk about is the governance standard and we did see that as met. We did have some concerns when we were there, but they were quickly, they quickly got us documentation or a response to how they were going to make some changes. And they, they have a very clear organizational chart that they shared with us. And then within that job district descriptions where they really did fine tune those a little bit more to make sure everybody was well aware of what their job was to do. I think in education, we jump in and we try to take the roles for everybody and, and they really made that a better process when we were there. They definitely, the whole unit really ensures that equitable and quality preparation regardless how it's being delivered. So if it's in the classroom or if it's online, they're very aware of making sure that, that both of those are rigorous processes to ensure that we're putting out those good educators. The diversity standard, which I've already talked about as far as a strength, we considered that met why, right when we were on campus, it really is one of the strengths of the campuses and there were no compliance issues that we saw. Additionally, the faculty standard, we didn't see any compliance issues and we considered that met. And then the assessment standard, we did, we considered that met, we did have some concerns when we were on campus, again, quickly resolved. They resolved the concerns by providing some additional documents. One in particular, they provided a teacher preparation assessment plan and creating an assessment management system for each program. So they had an assessment system, but because they're growing so quickly, getting that assessment system and all the pieces to the right, all important to us. And so they, they definitely, we had some great conversation back and forth to make sure that was happening. And then the last piece that we had talked to them a little bit about in assessment was that inter-rater reliability, just making sure they have that across the undergraduate and the graduate programs. And so again, they, they established a very clear process for us. The teacher clinical, we considered that as well as met and we didn't have any compliance concerns or issues there. And then the area, the standard of knowledge, skills and dispositions, there were a couple concerns that were quickly resolved. And that was clear communication on the in-tax, in-task standards with the faculty and students. And so they have an end of the year retreat. And so basically they brought all the faculty in then and they reviewed how those standards are being put in syllabi and talked about how that's going to be presented to the student. And I know as a formal, former faculty member that sometimes that's challenging. You're very well aware of the standards, but sometimes those don't get related to students and especially adult learners, right? That it's important they have a clear understanding of what standards you're trying to meet within the classroom. And so they did a nice job of that. The two, or the two additional or really four additional standards comes with the administration prep program and they have a clinical and a KSD standard. We considered both, both of those met. However, again, we did some clarification in that area. In the area of clinical with admin was that they, they had some simulation hours and Gary might talk a little bit about that, but they, they do this great simulation program and we could definitely see the value of it too. But they were counting that within their 400-hour requirement and that, that we just wanted to make it clear, those hours needed to be done in a school building. And so they were And so they were actually going above and beyond anyway. So they came up with a way to make sure that's well-defined so that they know they're meeting at least 400 hours in that school building. And then in the KSD area, they did align their NLP standards to the coursework and the clinical experience. And they did, we just had asked them to do that because it wasn't clear within their syllabi. And so, and then we asked them to resubmit that to the BOEE, which they did do as well. And then the counseling program that we've talked some about, we didn't have any compliance concerns within the clinical. We did within the KSD, that knowledge, skills, and dispositions. And there, they did provide with us, or provide to us the crosswalk that included coursework, assignments, and assessment matrix. And part of the reason that that wasn't all in place was because it's such a new program. And so we really wanted to see that plan laid out before we left of, you know, how are you going to ensure that this is a quality program? And so they provided that information. And then also in, within that, we also asked them to make sure there's a part of Chapter 79 that they have to make sure they address different types of learners, such as at-risk, talented and gifted. So a whole variety of different developmental things that we see. And we did ask them to make sure that that was included in there. And so they did go back into that and did some syllabi adjustment with that. And in all that, you would typically see that in a counseling program, but we wanted it laid out very clear that they were making sure that they were meeting all of those and building students that had a clear understanding of working with a variety of students. And then we also asked them to make sure in their counseling program they had a clear definition of diversity and how they were going to be making those clinical placements within that. But with that, we felt overall they met all of the standards and we are recommending Northwestern College for full approval. And at this time, I think Gary will take over and has a presentation to share with you.
Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you and thank you for all your work at the state level. And thanks to Kelly, Stephanie, and Maryam for the work that you did when you were here, not only when you were here, but afterwards. With me is Dr. Carrie Thonstad. She's our licensure coordinator and also teaches a course in the undergrad as well as in the graduate. She is in charge of our portfolio program for the EDAD program. Dr. Chris Nahoff is with us. He's our assessment coordinator and professor at secondary education level. And if I can share my screen. With you, Dr. Brower is not with us today. He had a planned trip with, he is the co-chair of the Education Department along with me. He had a trip planned with his daughter in Oregon, so he's not with us. But our residential undergraduate program is there on the screen for you. There are six and a half faculty members that are assigned to the undergrad program. We have 250 students currently enrolled in our education program. Together undergrad and grad, our online graduate and undergraduate education programs are listed. We have seven master's-level programs, six graduate-level programs that are for endorsement teachers. And we have a bachelor, bachelors in early childhood and a bachelor's in early childhood plus licensure program. We think that's the first online program in the state of Iowa. There are four and a half faculty members that are assigned to the graduate school. And we have approximately 45 adjuncts that cover 200 online courses for us. Our graduate school, all of our courses are synchronous. They're housed in eight or seven-week modules. We have year-round entry periods. We have a concierge approach with our enrollment counselors who take our students from acceptance to registering to develop a program of study and also do their advising. You can see from the screen that the history of the graduate school and adult learning division enrollment, in the summer of 2015, there were 14 students. And the second session of summer will be pushing 725 students and hopefully 750 in the fall. Interestingly, the growth occurred in between the seven-year accreditation visits. So the recommendations that were made by the accreditation team were purposeful and appreciated and very timely. Wanted to highlight one of our bigger programs and that's our Masters in Educational Administration Program and Principal Endorsement Program. And as you can see, we have 132 students. Actually, this morning, it went to 133. This is a 37-credit program, 30 coursework credits, seven internship credits. And the curriculum, as Kelly stated, is aligned with the Iowa School Standards for School Leaders and the National Education Leadership Preparation Standards for Higher Ed. Our programs consist of the following, and I wanted to, of all of those courses. And I wanted to spend some time, within those courses, candidates are assessed in a lot of different areas, but we house those in a learning community that Kelly and Stephanie and their team helped us organize when they were here. But this is a learning community that is a course in Blackboard for all of our EDAD students. And it's at the front end of the program. And on the back end, you see that we have EDAD 635, the professional portfolio. And so documents are uploaded to these two areas that would include the journaling that they do with their leadership coaches, the logs of all their clinical experiences, their MOAs or district contracts are there. Also, their assessments of the NLP standards proficiency are located there as well as assignments relating to the Iowa School Standards for Leaders. One of the unique aspects of our EDAD program is our leadership coaching program. You can see the framework of it there. But the coaches and the students sign off on this agreement with us. That's also included in their portfolio and in their early course. Those two meet for the entirety of the program. It's normally two years. And we really encourage our leadership coaches to maintain that mentorship long after the program is over. But they meet at a minimum of every eight weeks with their coach to help, to discuss and help them through coursework, to help them develop long-term projects for their internships, and sharing resources and best practices as they go through their relationship together. We have 110 active leadership coaches from across the state. And these coaches are certified administrators that are working as elementary or secondary principals, superintendents or AIA administrators. And as well as we use some retired folks as well that would have been in those administration areas. Our internship courses or where the 400 hours of clinical experiences are met, it's a rigorous program. The format for them and the framework is the same. The only thing that changes is the content, meaning that if they are in internship course, EDAD 530, which is schools, families, and communities, the assignments in there are relative to schools, families, and the communities. Each one of those internship courses has a series of shadowing activities that they do, some reflections on critical incidents. And we do have them go through educational simulations, which our students say are one of the most beneficial things that we do. The time that they spend going through those themselves and writing a reflection going forward is not included in their hours, but the time they spend discussing those with their building supervisors are. So again, all of the things that are within these courses are specific to the content. So since 2018, we've had over 100 graduates and 53 completers last year. And they're working in the places that are listed above. They're all over the state of Iowa. Pretty proud of them and pretty proud of the program. So with that, I'll stop sharing that and we'll certainly open it up to any questions that you might have.
Questions for Northwestern. Kelly, did you have something to add or?
I do not.
Oh. Gary, it's good to see your face. These guys just do an outstanding job. I think that my superintendent friends, when they're going through portfolios or they're going through credentials, I think they look at Northwestern College and say, "Wow, I want that kid." So again, my compliments to you. Very well-presented, all of you. Very well-done.
Thank you.
And I would love that we accept this program for another seven years. Motion's been made in a second. Need further discussion. Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of accreditation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, I did.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. We're scheduled for a break. It's about, a little bit late for the break. Let's come back at five till eleven.
Time on the agenda of the session, the cabinet. Excited.
Well, thank you, Mr. Robinson and board members. My name is Eric Keitz. I'm administrative consultant with the Bureau of School Improvement. And we have the pleasure today of being here to talk to you about Royal Legacy Christian Academy in Waterloo and their accreditation. And so just to get started, I'd like to have our Department of Ed folks introduce themselves. And then what I'll do is I'll just have, we have the representation here from the school. And actually, what I'll do is I'll have the school go through, introduce themselves, and then we'll jump back here to the Department of Education and then we'll go through our presentation and then open it up for you.
Okay.
So I'm Amber Robinson, principal.
I'm Chastity Martin. I'm a co-founder and serving as chaplain.
Kendall Helmer, co-founder.
Lolita Montgomery, board member.
Thomas Hommer, student.
Harlan. I'm Harlan. This is Harlan. That's Harlan and he's a great guy.
Yes.
Great guy.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Holly, oh, yep, yep. Holly, have you introduced yourself?
Hi, I'm Holly Barnes, School Improvement Consultant. And I've had the privilege of working with the school for probably the past year and a half. Yeah. And it's a great school. And if you have an opportunity to go visit, please do. It's in Waterloo. And pre-K through six. Pre-K through six. And beautiful, beautiful little school. So. And Buffy, I had to have surgery, so I didn't get to do the visit, but I've been working with the members from the school. And so in my absence, Buffy was lucky enough to get to take the visit for me.
I'm Buffy Campbell. I'm also a School Improvement Consultant, one of Holly's colleagues. And when she says lucky enough, it's a privilege. It was a marvelous place. I was joined by two of my colleagues from Central Rivers as well as Chris Murphy, who is the superintendent here at Toboy Christian. I know, or Grandview, I am sorry.
Grandview Christian.
Grandview Christian. We had a wonderful visit. Got the staff here and the kiddos. And honestly, it was a delight to spend time with them.
So before you today, you have a couple of documents and just want to give you a quick summary of what our process is. The process includes a document review and Holly took the lead on that, that they need to provide us with. Those include like board policies, making sure teachers are certified, which all of them are. Also includes a site visit, which Buffy led to the school itself. And you can see on, in the report, it lists out who was there. And then as part of that, the team provided celebrations and any recommendations to the school. There wasn't any non-compliance items. So based on that, we feel comfortable or we recommend that the school be accredited and they will be a state-accredited school. So they'll be working with us and reporting and will be working with them in the future. But they will be a state-accredited school. This process takes over a year to do. So the school has started last year, providing us with documents. We were preparing for the actual site visit and those sorts of things. So we would like to open it up to any questions that you may have for us or for the school themselves.
I'd love for you to talk about your school. Could you just do that? Give us some general information about it, who you serve and where and yeah.
Sure. Well, again, I'm Chastity Martin. And my friend Kendall and I started Royal Legacy in 2018. We started with homeschooling our own children. Two of them are right here and my children as well. And we had a heart as we began, you know, trying to decide how we were going to educate our own children, wanting to find ways or things that are already offered in our community. And we did find a few gaps that were very important to us as we were considering educating our own children. And so some of those things include faith, a faith foundation, also language learning. Spanish immersion was something that was very near and dear to my friend Kendall's heart. And so we started teaching in English one week and switching off to Spanish the following week. And we started getting interest. And so, long story short, we got wind of Joshua Christian Academy, which is here, and we got a visit there. We're very inspired by their model of making private school accessible to students regardless of their household income. And so we mirrored that model and offered our school 90% covered by donations and tuition and sponsorship and 10% with tuition. And so our student body does look probably different than most private school students. So we have a diverse student body and socio-economically diverse as well. And we hope to make that diversity even greater. And the Spanish immersion piece is something that we're very proud of and excited about to offer again. We had to take a gap year this year to rebuild it. And now this upcoming school year, we will offer Spanish immersion. And we're the only school in our Cedar Valley area that offers Spanish immersion in the way that we do it, which is called the Early Total One Way in which 100% of their academic instruction is taught exclusively in Spanish. And so we're very excited about the results that we've gotten from our students that have been with us since the beginning in 2018, who have some very nice fluency in Spanish in reading, writing, speaking, and understanding. So overall, our desire is to make Christian education accessible and affordable for students, have small class sizes and a nurturing, loving environment where students feel safe learning. And we just, we hope to continue providing a welcoming environment for students in the Cedar Valley and an educational option for parents who may not have considered private school before.
How many kids? How many grades do you serve?
We're kindergarten through sixth grade. We're actually pre-K through sixth grade. We also opened up Legacy Littles, which is serving infants through five-year-olds. And now we also serve K through sixth grade at this point. And this upcoming school year, our enrollment has been, this last year, we only had 21 students. We opened up at 28 students. So we've kind of hovered in that range. So we are anticipating a growth in our enrollment for next year as well. So incrementally growing, especially with the ESAs that have just passed.
Thank you.
What are your biggest challenges?
Up to this point, our biggest challenges with our model has been continuing to finance our school. So that has been the biggest hurdle. And we've overcome those obstacles through community partnerships and sponsorships, but that has always been the drive of, you know, fundraising and sharing our story with as many people too that believe in our vision. So we're grateful for that burden to be alleviated quite a bit in the upcoming school year.
What is your capacity for students?
Our capacity for next year is 125, I believe, or somewhere about there. So, and that's been another challenge, hasn't it, with hiring for Spanish immersion? Hiring Spanish immersion has been a big hurdle, which is one of the biggest reasons why we took a break. And now there's that partnership with Spain that... which is one of the biggest reasons why we took a break. And now there's that partnership with Spain that the Iowa Department of Education, I think, has with Spain. So that we've taken advantage of that and hired someone internationally. Now with our pending accreditation, that has opened that opportunity up as well to overcome that hurdle.
They have small class sizes. Offer multi-grade instruction in the same classroom, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can you tell us how that works briefly?
Sure, sure. Dr. Robinson, take it away.
We know what certifications our elementary teachers are K through six. And so our teachers are trained. We were very blessed this past year to have, between the two teachers that we have, over 40 years of teaching experience. And so traditionally, we use workshop in the class with our small classrooms. It allows, we're just rotating through. There is some whole group instruction, but a lot of our math and literacy is done in a workshop model is probably the easiest answer. Make it work.
Are there opportunities for your graduates from sixth grade to continue in a Spanish immersion in the Cedar Valley?
Not at this time. Our, one of the goals has always been to add a grade. Definitely want to make sure that we can walk before we run. On a solid foundation at the K through six level. And so that is, that is our hope, to continue to build.
Thank you.
Is enrollment wide open, and you take everybody, or do you make some selections?
We have an enrollment process that includes a family interview. One of the things that we promised is a safe and friendly, Christ-centered environment. So there are some things that we talk to families to make sure values align. We have relatively few, I mean, minimal discipline issues. That's one thing, again, that we, we promise to families, is that we will protect our environment and recreating some of those nurturing systems. So to answer your question, there is a family interview process where we're very clear about expectations behaviorally and academically. And we also invite our parents to partner. There's a volunteer requirement that our parents, 20 hours for the year. So inviting those community partnerships, parents into the school really, really helps with that increase, that environment.
Thank you. If we approve of this, which I anticipate we are going to, does that go effective immediately, like today? Because of the, I'm asking because of the ESA process?
Correct.
And then we start the party. That's right.
You also have, so they have a preschool program, and you also, am I reading correctly, you have like a daycare program?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk to me about that a little bit as far as the daycare? Is this younger kids, are the kids going there, or is this for?
It's open to everyone in the Cedar Valley. We've also partnered with our women's shelter, House of Hope. So we offer infant care in their facility, and they allow us to use their room. And then we give priority enrollment for residents at House of Hope. But that is also open to everyone in the Cedar Valley. And we, in our building with the K through six academy, we serve two and a half to five-year-olds in our pre-K program as well.
How many, approximately how many people are in that?
We have about 20 students between the two sites, 20 infant to five-year-olds.
You also?
After-school.
Oh, yeah. And our after-school program as well. We serve the students of?
How late does that go?
Three to six, 3:00 PM until 6:00 PM. Yes.
Do you offer special ed services as well?
We do not at this time. With accreditation, we will have access to AEA services and partner with Waterloo Public. But no, not at this time.
Will that, transportation, will that also enable you to partner with one of the districts?
That will be an option for our parents, yes.
Where did you get the facility?
That's a great question.
Looks like a neat building.
It is a huge building.
Yeah, we, we, we started the school in my church at the time, Harvest Vineyard Church. We were using their Sunday school rooms, just two classrooms. And then the second year, we, Sacred Heart Catholic School, it was their last school year before they closed. And they reached out and just did not want their building to just be sitting empty. So they called us and said, hey, if you guys want a building, we'll make the rent doable for you. So that was a blessing. We were really grateful for that. So we jumped on that. And now we're leasing the building from Sacred Heart Parish.
Good. Thank you.
How do you guys like school?
I really like it because there's nice people there, nice teachers, and it's fun. And everyone there is nice.
That's great. How many students in your class?
Let's see, like 10 or 11.
10, 11. Perfect, yeah.
I got a question for you. What's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject would probably be... That's a hard one.
You like them all.
There's always recess.
Sounds like me.
But I do like science.
Kid after my own heart, I love science.
Yeah, I like watching the science experiments on the TV.
Good.
Well, congratulations. That is no easy feat.
No, it is not.
To start school and then go through an accreditation process. That is just remarkable. And all of you should be commended highly for your efforts and your interest in advancing your students' careers. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can we move to approve?
Are you making your motion? Oh.
Mike's making a motion.
I'll second.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, those indicate, those in favor of accreditation indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
Sure, I know. Run out of juice.
They're all using Fortuna. Comprehensive schools update.
Want to share my screen?
Hey, well, I'm Kim Briannick. I'm the Learning and Results Division Administrator. And thank you for allowing me time this morning to be a part of this board agenda. I know in the past, there's been a couple meetings where the director, whether it was Dr. Lebo or Director Aldis, has talked to you briefly about the comprehensive schools and just the efforts that the Department of Education has recently been engaged in to support the comprehensive schools. And I'm pleased to share with you today just of the comprehensive, comprehensive schools update. So with that, I'm going to start with just a little bit of background. So in 2019, under our approved Every Student Succeeds Act plan, which is a federal requirement, Iowa identified 24 schools as in, in need of comprehensive support. They were in the lowest 5% of school state under our differentiated accountability system. So since then, since 2019, we had 13 of these 24 schools that were identified as comprehensive in 2019, have improved enough in student achievement scores to no longer need support. So we had a study that was conducted to learn the actions of these schools and to, and what they did to increase student achievement. So I'll talk to you about the results of that study. Also, there were 11 schools identified in 2019 that remained in 2022 in the lowest 5% of schools. So these 11 schools are designated as extended comprehensive schools. And the Department of Education is providing extensive support to these schools to help them improve. And I'm going to explain the steps that we've taken with that as well. So let's start with the extended comprehensive schools. Here is a list of the 11 extended comprehensive schools. And behind the school name in parentheses is the district name. There are seven elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools on the list. The two high schools are both alternative high schools. So we put together a, a plan and, and have walked forward this plan. But it all started last fall when the designations came out. I invited the staff from the Learning and Results Division to join me in a conversation about these schools. So we had the list of schools that were extended comprehensive, the list of schools that had exited a designation status. And we just had a think tank and had a conversation about, about these schools, about the supports that had been provided. But more importantly, about what are we going to do about it? And it was very strongly, the consensus was, we need to do something. And we need to provide supports for, for the schools. So a smaller team was assembled. And this team, we contacted the 11 schools. We put together our plan, and we contacted the schools. And then we began with a data analysis. We took each of these 11 schools and we just studied their data, the same data they had, and, and learned as much as we could through that format. But as, as you know, you know, data tells a story, but it doesn't tell the entire story. So there were other steps that we wanted to take to really understand and learn as much as we could about these 11 schools. So the next step in our process was we held a virtual pre-visit with each of these schools, their leadership, and then the department's team. We sent them questions ahead of time. Most of the questions, the questions were centered around what instructional materials are you using for literacy? What instructional materials are you using for math? When did you adopt these? What is your professional development look like? What does your teacher leadership and compensation system look like? Things we couldn't learn from the data analysis, but we wanted to have that understanding before we went and visited the school. Following that, we then did a, conducted a two-day onsite visit. And the team, there was about 12 of us for each of these visits. And we immersed ourselves into classrooms. And we spent, we didn't do walkthroughs, but we observed for large amounts of time in the literacy block, or the math block, or the whole English Language Arts period that was being held, as well as other classes too. It wasn't just specific or limited to literacy or math. We did meet with a few teams while we were there also to ask additional questions, things that we, we were wondering about. But this did not resemble the old days, site visits that the department used to conduct. This was different because of just that immersion in those classrooms. The team, we learned as much as we could. And then we put together a report that we gave to each of the schools. And in the report, there were recommendations, recommendations for improvement based on what we had learned. And then the schools are each, they're in the process now of preparing a, a school improvement plan, which will be submitted to the department. We will review those, approve those, and then they will move forward with their plan. And we're about halfway through that process right now. Schools are in the process of developing and submitting their school improvement plans to us. And then next year, we plan to do follow-up visits to just make sure that that plan that was developed is being implemented. And we're going to look for those steps that they said they were going to take are actually happening next year. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a, in a moment. So when we were observing in these schools, we found some common themes. We saw some things in common across these schools. And these are the recommendations, the most common recommendations that we made to these schools. We recommended that they're, that they provide professional learning with the instructional materials that are being used in literacy and math. Before we went, I was trying to kind of guess what we would see. And I wondered if we were going to see high-quality instructional materials being used in, in these schools. And most of them did. I think, you know, during the pandemic and the, the extra relief funds that were provided to schools, a lot of schools used some of that funding to acquire high-quality instructional materials. So we saw the instructional materials in place. It's just how it was being used. There could be more professional learning was one of our recommendations, so that they're being used in line with how the publishers intended those materials to be used. We also made recommendations about the district level should establish tight and loose expectations for the utilization and implementation of instructional materials. We felt that districts or schools should strengthen instructional practices. We recommended that they use interventions from the instructional materials and focus interventions on skill development in a lot of places. We also made recommendations about establishing a system to address attendance. We noticed that a large number of these schools had chronic attendance or absenteeism rates higher than the state average. We also felt that a system to reengage students was, was important for some of the schools. We made recommendations that the staff from the teacher leadership and compensation system engage in regular coaching cycles to support teachers as they implement new practices or utilize new materials. And we felt that the strengthening of the classroom management practices was important also. And the district should have tight and loose expectations for that classroom management system.
What are interventions?
Interventions?
In that context?
We were looking at academic interventions. So if a student received literacy instruction or was learning how to read, but they were struggling with reading, that they could have a supplemental program or extra supports or interventions that would help them improve those skills that they were missing. Sometimes it's, it's a program or a product, a lot of times, that is purchased.
So it's not about the educator, it's about the student?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It's about the educator doing something differently. Okay.
And using a different approach, a different material to make sure they're understood.
Attendance process, how was that changed? Was there a direct contact with parents? I mean, how did they correct, or how were they given instruction to correct that?
Well, the recommendations have been provided. They're developing their plans.
Okay.
A lot of schools, we have a Next Week Teaching for Impact training, or training that's being offered. And Attendance Works is one of the keynote speakers, as well as having a workshop. And a lot of these schools are coming to those sessions on June 15th to really dig in and learn about and think about and plan for better attendance practices.
The, the study that the 13 schools, that you had of those 13 schools, does this come from that? Are these from that, or are these separate?
This is separate.
Okay. Where, where does that study come in to?
Oh.
All right, sorry. Always jumping ahead.
Do most schools not, I mean, do these schools not have anything for attendance? Like at my son's school, like if you miss a certain amount of, you know, then you start, I mean, then it's like more intensive, like they start, I guess, like maybe because you're missing so much time, that they probably bring us, I would never think I'd reach that level, but they do say, like, if you reach, if you are absent a certain number of days, like basically, we're going to be on you. And you're probably going to have to enter some kind of like, you know, I don't know, some kind of help thing or something like that, or assistance or something, but?
A lot of the schools had policies in place, but the practices weren't following the policies.
Oh, okay.
And it wasn't all of them, but the ones, there were several that we made this recommendation for.
There's a huge correlation between attendance and success.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and also, we're in a position at the Department of Education, especially through the federal relief funding, to the federal relief funding, to provide additional support to these schools. And we're in a really good place with that. So I think this is really important, and this is how we're leading this. When we have the conversations with the superintendents, we want to support you. You know, they're not, they don't like being in the position that they are. And sometimes it's just hard to see what the next steps should be. So we're providing support. We started with the visit, but as we developed these reports, some of the things that we're offering as far as support is, for the few schools that had not purchased high-quality instructional materials yet, we're offering to help them do that. So that's, students have good quality materials and teachers have good quality materials to use in classrooms. We're also helping with providing professional learning training and compensation for staff attendance in the areas of classroom management, the science of reading, and the use of the high-quality instructional materials. And like I mentioned earlier, the department and AEA staff are going to visit monthly these schools to provide support as they implement their improvement plans.
So can I assume that these schools received some of these offers or support in the interim before they, the assessment again said they're going to be on this extended plan? I mean, I assume the department was providing those recommendations and supports from 19 to now. Kind of helped them get?
No, this is, these supports are being offered now.
Now.
Through the next.
Okay, so let me ask, what was offered when they were initially identified as in need of?
That's a great question. And I'm relatively new to the department. I started in July and there were probably, there's a process in place that comprehensive schools need to work through a process of a self-assessment, making an action plan, and then submitting that action plan for approval. There's staff at the department that would monitor that and keep track of that. But as far as, I mean, this is intensive, what we did with these 11 schools.
Yeah, but it didn't just start now.
So Kim, maybe I can jump in too.
Sure.
So sorry, Jay Pennington, Department of Ed. So to answer your question, so a couple of things happened. I mean, so yes, these schools were identified originally as a comprehensive school. Then COVID happened. And, you know, basically, states were given a break, in essence, in terms of having to continue to identify. So what Kim is showing you here is, you know, the continuation of those after the break. So states were given the ability to sort of get a waiver in terms of accountability while folks, you know.
Trying to figure out all that other stuff that was going on.
Yeah, so this, and so, so this was the first set of identification that occurred.
Okay.
But yes, to answer your question, I mean, they, the district had to identify a plan. They had to work on their plan. But clearly, these didn't make improvements. So the idea is they get out of, out of that status. And so now that they're in an extended status, then the department is more directive in terms of what activities need to occur.
Okay. Thank you.
To kind of piggytail on that, it started out with 24. The department was doing something with those 24. And of those, many succeeded and got beyond that point. So you were giving support to the 24 and some just were unable to improve enough to get off the list.
Okay.
What about, is there anything in here for recommendations for parent engagement or parent kind of support or anything like that?
For these 11 schools?
Yeah, just kind of how to engage the parents, maybe support for the parents, parents, I mean.
There were conversations at some of the schools especially about that aspect, yes.
Because, I mean, they're collecting that data, right? I mean, we do a survey twice a year as required by law, right? So parents are filling out surveys twice a year for their schools?
Yes, they are. I don't know if it's twice a year. I know conditions for learning.
I think, oh, okay, I thought it was in the fall, this way. Okay.
Once a year, yeah.
So they have that data. So, I mean, are they doing anything, I guess, with that? Because that might be helpful to see kind of where, what parents feel about the school, the teaching, the, how their kids feel or, you know, anything like that, that might be helpful.
To this designation, the conditions for learning survey, those results are built into this designation as well as student achievement results. But the satisfaction survey that each school administers that survey, that is not built into our designation system or scoring system, I don't think. Is it?
Well, conditions for learning.
Conditions for learning is, but not the other one that you're talking about.
So a couple of notes, the using high-quality instructional materials with fidelity, that's a lot easier said than done. It's a heavy lift. Anytime you're changing curriculum and instructional practices, it doesn't happen overnight. So I don't think the expectation should be, while we're doing this now, so everything should be fine. Back to Mike's comment about attendance, that is true. But there's a lot of reasons why kids attend and don't attend. And some of that is, you can blame it on whoever you want to blame and points the fingers out. But the bottom line is that kids want to have a feeling that it's important to be here. I feel valued here. And so when you're looking at attendance, it's that proverbial onion where there's lots of reasons, lots of excuses, but still there's a connection. So if kids feel valued where they're at, feel purposeful where they're at, that doesn't change overnight.
If you're identified as one of these schools, then you're given options for what you can do to satisfy. Is that correct? Or is this just a step-by-step from the feds who say you will do these things?
No, you're given options. Schools have the option to develop a plan.
One of those to replace administrators, is that, is that one of the options or not? It used to be.
It used to be.
It used to be. Okay, but we're not doing that anymore. Okay, thank you.
Awesome, Mr. Get rid of that one, Mike.
Your vote counts more than mine.
So the federal government said 5%. And so is that 5% just locked in or is there a new 5% coming down the road or do we know that yet?
We do, Jay, you want to speak about the designation?
So it's a three-year cycle. And the idea is that there's both stable funding, as well as, you know, as Kim mentioned, these extended comprehensive schools are working their plan. And the first thing is like recognizing you have a problem, building a plan around it. And that's where they're in the midst of approving those. But then, now, you know, again, you mentioned like change doesn't happen overnight. And so there's two additional years to determine, you know, did they enact the plan enough to then exit after three years? So the extended is a three-year cycle. There's also another designation, which we're not going to talk about, but basically it's for, it was called a targeted school. It's for students with disabilities or, you know, a particular race or ethnic group is identified. And those are on an annual basis of being identified. And then there's a three-year cycle, again, that they work their plan. But you can exit after three years, it's simple.
But there's no new schools coming on in the foreseeable future. Because we're always going to have a 5% bottom. We'll always have that.
So the exited, I'm sorry, the extended group is a five-year cycle. So we will have another 5% or maybe the same 5% in three years.
Okay, thank you.
Targeted is every year.
Targeted is every year.
Yes.
But the goal would be that that bottom 5% someday would still meet all standards, right?
Right.
Okay.
What happens if they've been on for, I mean, so now we're in extended, so what happens after extended? If they're still down, if they're still not where they need to be?
So, just a couple of things. You know, Mike mentioned the turnaround models that were, you know, part of NCLB. So like, those are super prescriptive, like fire half your staff, get rid of the administrator. And under ESSA, they didn't, you know, prescribe that because like those kinds of turnaround models may not work in a rural state, right? Like there may not be options to just fire half your staff, right? I mean, that is your staff. So, but the idea is the longer you're on, the more directive the department is in terms of determining what path you need to take. And so this is our first entry into this extended comprehensive status. We haven't fully defined what happens after three more years.
And to the President Robbins' point, some of these schools in the extended comprehensive could show significant improvement that we can measure, but could still be in the bottom 5% because there's always going to be a bottom 5%. So that's where the next steps, if there are next steps, the state will have to think about what makes sense. Because you don't want to penalize people who are making substantive progress for their students.
So when I met with the staff from the division, we also looked at the list of the 13 schools that exited the comprehensive status in 2022. And we believe that we could learn as much from them and share that as well. So here's the list of the 13 schools. And behind the school is the, in parentheses, the school district. I just want to point out Haywarden, Ierton Elementary, which is in the West Sioux School District, about halfway down the list. There's two buildings, so that constitutes the 13 schools. But Ierton is a K1 building, and so they don't have student achievement data to report. But we back map the Haywarden Elementary status or designation, which is a 2 through 5 building, back to that building. So that's how I got the 13 buildings because they were designated, had the same designation as Haywarden, so. So we were fortunate and partnered with the Region 9 Comprehensive Center, which is a component of the American Institute for Research. We just didn't have the capacity to study these 13 schools. And so we have this partnership. So we leaned on them and they were able to, to work with us to come up with, to conduct this study. We started by contacting the 13 schools and acknowledging their improvement and congratulated them on their success and then asked them, can we learn from you? And would you be willing to participate in a study so we could learn from you? And all 13 schools took advantage and said, yes, they would like to participate in the study. So that's when Region 9 staff held, went out and either held in-person or virtual visits with each of these schools between January and May of 2023. And they conducted interviews and focus groups with the staff from each of these schools. And then they analyzed the findings and from the interviews, from the focus groups, and they looked at data, accountability data. They identified the overall themes. And then they provided us with the report about the educators' perspectives on what they did, what the factors were that caused their school improvement. And so that's what I'm going to share with you, the findings from the report. So what we learned is, first of all, these schools did overall have student growth and student achievement improvement. Some of them weren't above the state average, but you could see that they made some gains. So that was good. When they did the interviews, the primary researcher informed me in our conversation before the report came out that she was amazed that all 13 schools had the same story. And she was really surprised by that. It was not a common thing for you to hear the same thing over 13, you know, as you interview people. But she said it was really the same story. And what she heard was that these schools, when they were designated as a comprehensive school in 2019, they were shocked. They were embarrassed and they made a commitment as a staff to improve. And they believed they could do it and they wanted to do it and make a difference for the students in their community and in their schools. They also all used the self-assessment of MTSS implementation, which we call the SAMI. And it is a tool that the Iowa Department of Education has created for schools to use to do a self-assessment, have conversations, and then to, it helps guide them in developing a school improvement plan. And all of these schools said it was useful and they did use that. The leaders and teachers were very strategic. Once they developed a plan, they were very strategic in how they implemented it. And they really took steps that caused incremental change. So they may have adopted new literacy materials and new math materials, but they didn't do it both in the same year. They first implemented the literacy changes and supported that with professional learning. And then a year or two years later, they had the next change that they, that they put into place to make this happen. They all adopted high-quality instructional materials. And then they aligned the instructional practices with those materials. They really used the materials and the practices within the materials and really focused on improving just that core instruction that was happening in the classroom.
Why weren't they using materials like this before? I mean, just because it wasn't serious enough? I mean, obviously, they want to, they want their kids to succeed, just like every other teacher does. So why weren't they using the kinds of materials that you're telling us about?
Well, they may not have realized that it wasn't high-quality materials. You know, they thought they were good enough. They didn't realize they were at the bottom 5% of schools performance-wise in the state.
And you helped them to identify those materials then? I mean, that's part of what we do.
We are now, yes. We're identifying those for the extended comprehensive schools. I think these schools did not, I'm not aware that they reached out to us for that specific guidance. They were also, if they had the materials, they reported that teachers were kind of left to use them however they wanted to. And it wasn't that tight loose, that, okay, we're all going to use these materials in this way. So they tightened up those practices, like those high-quality instructional materials caused that to happen, just that greater alignment across practices. And then they also had support within professional learning communities. So what that means is there were principals or instructional coaches or reading coaches in the professional learning communities with teachers. So as they were having conversations, there was another layer of support for the teachers as they were planning and making plans for instruction. We learned a few more things too. All the former comprehensive schools improved their use of data and differentiation. So they were looking at data for students and determining that the students who were struggling, and they did something about it. They used interventions or they put them into groups so they received extra instruction. But they were able to do that based on their data analysis and really target their instruction for kids for the needs that they had.
I'm just going to add a comment. So I was on the Cedar Rapids School Board. It'll be four years this December that I came off. And it was five years ago, that was the first time, this very large school district, second in the state as far as enrollment and budget, the first time we ever hired a data analyst. So there wasn't anyone getting these test scores and these, everything that went into student development and achievement in a comprehensive way that would be meaningful in the classroom. So I don't know how many schools in the state have data analytics. I know Des Moines does, I know CR does, but I don't know a lot of other schools that have the resources to provide that information. So there, she's absolutely right. They were missing that, what are we doing wrong here? And they didn't see that picture until that data became available, right?
Yes.
But that's frustrating too. I mean, it's frustrating to think that, that we're not preparing teachers to begin with to diagnose problems that they have with their students. I mean, what are we missing out on here? And then we have a whole staff that aren't aware that they need other techniques to diagnose and prescribe for kids. It bothers me. I mean, are we, are we failing as a board in terms of holding these teacher prep programs speed to the fire? I mean, are we saying that we're just not preparing people? Because, I mean, this shouldn't be happening to kids.
I don't know if it's a question of them not being prepared, but I think that, you know, if you implement a new system or a new, you know, curriculum, I think that, you know, you owe it to your staff to train them on that and how to use it and how to implement it, right? And I mean, I think that if you switch from one thing to another, I mean, I think that that, no matter how prepared you are coming out of maybe a teacher preparation program, I think you're going to need some training on that. And that should come probably, you know, from someone, I need some help, I think. So I think just buying high-quality materials, I mean, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be high-quality teaching just because you spend a lot of money on something, right?
You're absolutely right. You both are, actually. I do believe.
I've met a lot of teachers in my lifetime that I've never found one that didn't want to work the hardest for kids.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Now, sometimes along the way, you need a wake-up call and to reexamine what we're doing and how we're doing that. And so I don't think that they were misguided or purposely trying not to do what they thought.
No, absolutely.
For kids, it's just, sometimes for change to happen, something dramatic has to occur. And sometimes this is that call. And sometimes this is that call, that wake-up call.
Like, I'm concerned that, that we're preparing kids, young adults, to get in the classroom and are are able. I mean, I know some of our preparing institutions, like Central, for instance, they have kids in the classroom, and they're doing diagnostic work long before they graduate from college. But are we doing that everywhere? And and do we need more of that in terms of preparation? And I understand, everybody wants to do a good job. I really believe that. I think every teacher does. But the question is, are we getting the right things in place to help them do that?
Do we have data on absenteeism that can show us that that's how big of a factor that is in, in this situation?
Yes.
And you can have all the materials and the best teachers in the world, if you're not there, you're not there. I mean, what kind of numbers are we talking about? Is it, is it across the board that that's an issue? Or is it limited to, you know, larger schools? What, what's the?
Well, didn't the state legislature address this and try to change the comprehensive age requirements?
No, I understand. I'm just curious as to what the number is here. Are we talking 10% of the kids at this school are routinely missing a day a week? Are we talking 50% of the students miss more than 25 days a semester?
So we define chronic absenteeism as missing 10% or more of the days. So in a year, 180 days, that'd be more than 18 days. But we, but we calculate it month by month or as we go. So if we're three months into the school year, you know, that's 60, 60 days into the school year, 18% of those days, or 10% of those days would be, you know, six. So you keep running calculation. We do have a state average for chronic absenteeism. I was using last year's data because it was the full academic year. And then we were comparing these 11 schools to that state average. There were some that were significantly high. In this, 68% of their students were chronically absent.
Okay.
There were, the state average, I'd, I'd have to look back. I don't want to quote it without looking at that. But we could prepare a report for a future board meeting if you are interested in that on the state's average.
I just, you know, having read about this, our local newspaper in the Dubuque area, because one of the, you saw one of the schools was there, does a lot of information about it. And it seems to be toward that. I mean, because they have some of the best teachers, they have some of the best, they have the same technology as everybody else in the instructional materials, but people simply aren't there. And so what do we do about that?
You know, our, our chronic absenteeism rate is higher in the state than it was before the pandemic.
Yeah.
We changed our practices in schools, too. We were always telling kids or families, just send them to school. If they're sick, send them to school. They need to be in school. Well, that changed. If you have a fever, if you're coughing, we don't want you in school. You know, you need to stay home for a period of time. Well, you know, we changed our practices and our messaging. So this is an area of focus that, that across the country is being discussed, and we will be having those conversations in Iowa as well. And just re-engaging and emphasizing how important attendance is. Because when kids show up and come to school, they are going to move forward in Iowa schools. Like, we, we can see that.
Is there a difference between high school, middle school, and elementary school on attendance?
Yes, yes. And there's differences by grade level, too. Kindergarten has a high rate of absenteeism, and it's probably just you're thinking about the, you know, oh, it's just kindergarten. And that needs to change as well because there are very important foundational skills being taught in kindergarten that we don't want kids to miss, right?
Yeah, reading by third grade, yeah.
Wow. And building the, the behavior pattern of coming to school.
Yes.
And at school.
Probably more important, right?
Learning is important.
So there were a couple more things that we learned from these schools. One was when they received the designation, their focus was on academics. They just, was laser-like focus. Just recently, just in the 2022, 23 school year, there were a few schools that now are also shifting or including a focus on social emotional supports. But it really did cause them to, to focus on academic achievement. And several schools made adjustment to their schedules to dedicate more time to reading and math instruction and to protect those blocks of time from interruptions and just really had an emphasis and a focus on math. So our next steps, what are, what we plan to do now is we're going to continue to support the extended comprehensive schools. We are going to monthly have visits there, making sure that their plan that they developed is implemented and support them in, in that fashion. We also have 22 comprehensive schools that were added this year as comprehensive schools. So we're going to conduct site visits to those schools during the 2023, 24 school year. It may not be as intensive as the site visits this year were, but we are going to hold those same site visits and be able to provide recommendations to those schools as well to help them cause improvement. We also want to provide regional trainings focused on the areas that are identified through our site visits, either through the extended comprehensive schools or comprehensive schools. So if we see something in common where people are struggling or need more support, such as classroom management, then we're going to arrange for classroom management training to be held or offered in regions throughout the state. And then we also want to share what we've learned through our visits and the Region 9 study with other schools in the state so they can also see what steps were taken. And I would like to say that when the Region 9 Comprehensive Study, I mean, there's steps that schools can take that are research-based, that cause improvements. And these 13 schools that are no longer designated, they put many of those steps into place. And our recommendations for the 11 extended comprehensive schools follow those same and actually follow some of these steps that the comprehensive, extended, the schools that were removed from support did. So we're on the right track. We're offering intensive support for schools that are struggling in Iowa. And I can't wait to see the increased achievement that, that's going to be caused or occur in the near future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Recognizing, oh, sorry. Recognizing that we're always going to have a 5%, is there any kind of preventative awareness that we can offer to say, you're on the edge? So sharing the learnings of what we've taken from all of this to some of those schools that may be kind of teetering on that, to say, you know, here's some things you should be taking a look at that might be impacting you, balancing maybe that 6 to 10% of what does your attendance look like? Maybe take a look at your learning. Maybe look at how you're investing in your, your math and reading time spaces. And so is there any of that kind of awareness we can create for those schools that are?
So I think that sharing these site visits, you know, what we learned, as well as the Region 9 report, is one thing that we can do to help raise awareness of the steps that can be taken to cause an improvement. We also have a school performance profile website, as you're probably aware, that has the composite score for all of our schools. And so you could see where, where that line's at and where you rank by downloading some of that information and kind of monitor that yourself. But those are probably the two things, but.
How do we promote it, though? So does everybody, is there like a, a blast of this is now available, you need to go out? Or do you just have to know that it's there and it's there at this time? So go.
In the fall, when the designations come out, we do communicate that with all the schools, school superintendents, that your designation will be on this site as well as the new composite score. And, you know, we refer to it at times, and, and as they work through the process, they're engaging in their own data through our SAMI, which I talked about earlier, and just that whole school improvement process that's in place for those schools.
There's really no reason why schools would not know that.
Okay.
And usually, the department, at least in past years, gave the schools a heads-up embargo of that information before it went publicly, given the chance to kind of absorb it and figure out what their PR plan was, if any.
Well, it's true that, I mean, there is, there's probably relatively few schools that are so good that they, that they can't improve. I mean, we're, we're talking about, right, right. We're talking about a dire situation here, where there's places that are in extreme need, I think, is what we're talking about. And, you know, to make the top 95% of, you know, right? I mean, we want way more achievement from everybody, but we have to help schools that are not, you know, that, that are having a particularly hard time. That's what this is about, right?
Yes, correct.
Just because you get out of this 5% doesn't, doesn't mean, okay, you know, job done. No, it's not even close, I would say.
Right. Okay. So how does this tax the, the resources of the, of the department? Is this something, we have plenty of staff to do this? Do we?
I am a little facetious.
Is that, is that, is that a problem for us?
We, you know, conducting these 11 site visits and spending two days plus the whole process that we put in place, it was, it was, it was, you know, it was a lot of work for the staff. I have, we, we worked across bureaus. I had 12 people at each of those site visits. A lot of the same people went to all of them. They did a fantastic job. I'm, I just, I can't tell you how, what a great team I had. We are fortunate this next year that we have taken a couple of our positions at the department and repurposed them for this purpose, and we're aligning some of the other positions to this work. So we're just thinking about our current staffing and positions and, and thinking about how it can contribute and support this work.
Yeah, that sounds great.
We didn't note it on the 11 that are still on the list, but of the 13 that went off, I noted that of those 13, 11 were elementary buildings. What, what's your thought? Why, why is it such an issue in the elementary and not in the higher level?
Well, one thing with this designation, it's for, the 5% is Title I buildings unless they are a high school that has a graduation rate below 67, 65%. So in the state of Iowa, most of our Title I schools are elementary.
Okay. Thank you.
With these schools that, you know, are facing this problem, when the kids are like graduating into like middle school and that, how are they being treated and targeted because of those gaps before? Like, what's happening there? Because it's great that now these kids coming in are getting the help, but what about the kids who are leaving and they're continuing their education? They have these gaps. It's going to show what's happening there.
That's a great question. And, you know, a couple of the schools were middle schools, a couple were high schools where you, you know, their, their student achievement is struggling. I think that's, it's, I, I, it's not easy to close an achievement gap, especially as students get older in the middle school and high school, but it can be done. And we are at the department, even though I've spent quite a bit of time this morning talking about the lowest 5% of the schools, what we're doing to support them. We are also developing our, our statements and our plans to, to do just that, to improve instruction across the state for all kids. We're very soon going to share with you some of the work that we're doing in the area of reading and literacy. And we want our work to be grounded in the science of reading. And I think it kind of speaks to what Mike was bringing up earlier, that, you know, and if you have the wrong materials or how do you know if it's the right? Well, we do know. There's been 50 years of research about brains and research and, and the science behind how a child learns how to read. And we need to, and the state of Iowa, implement those practices. And all of us get behind that, whether it's a classroom teacher or a parent or higher education. And we need to come together and just really focus in on what works.
Right on, right on.
So in a little bit of foreshadowing, your question will be very applicable to a presentation Jay Pennington will be giving this afternoon on the achievement gaps. And, and one of the slides that is very powerful and chilling was it will look at the gaps when students enter school and the size of the gaps when they, when they leave. So it'll be, save those questions. There'll be more you'll have after you see that data.
Well, I'm going to make an executive motion here to adjourn for lunch.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next time on the agenda, the state government alignment. Thank Mark for delaying his.
Thank you for not, thank you for not putting me between lunch. I appreciate that.
I don't know, you're after lunch.
After lunch is nap time, so.
It's got its window, though.
I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you a little bit about the alignment and process and the progress that we've made. By the way, I'm Mark Ford. I'm deputy director of the department and COO of the Department of Education. And also, I happen to be the project manager for the department as far as the alignment is concerned. So lots going on, that as well as ESA. We have a few things happening. But the continuing work of merging the Board of Educational Examiners, the College Student Aid Commission, STEM Advisory Council, Iowa School for the Deaf, and the Iowa Educational Services for the Blind and Visually Impaired continues. It's on schedule. We have a July 1 deadline, and we're pushing hard for that deadline. There, it's, it's, it's a big lift. It's a heavy lift. And I think, spoken about it before in this, in this format, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but thank you, Director, for taking care of that. But the biggest lift probably has been with the Board of Regents organizations and, and as far as their employees and benefits. There, there are concerns with payroll and compensation and business systems changing. So those are the things we've really had to focus on quite a bit here in the last few weeks, particularly. And we are fortunate to have the resources of DOM, the Department of Management and DAS, Department of Administrative Services, working with us to help pull that together. It was, a lot of it is the uncertainty and, and the uncertainty of what's next. And so being very worried about their futures and being very worried about, I'm close to retirement, what happens to my retirement, what happens to my tenure, what happens to? And then also with the special schools, you know, we have faculty, we have merit employees, and those are not necessarily classifications that fit within the state model. So the, even DAS is having to get creative as far as job classifications, how do, how do they fit? We're having to create new classifications. So it's created, created a lot of work in addition to all the other agencies that are merging and getting that 37 agencies down to 16. So we are, we are fortunate to have some very strong and very professional support behind us. And I, I, I'm very, I'm thrilled. I'm thankful for the team we've got within the Department of Education as well, our professionals. Hard work is not something that's alien to them because we've asked them to take this on in addition to what they do already. And many times, there have been multiple meetings, and times there have been multiple meetings with, and just as an, for instance, IT, information technology. When you start talking about moving the Board of Regents staff from their IT platforms into the state platform, that's not just a switch that's flipped. That requires a tremendous amount of logistical work, planning, strategizing, working together with teams, get as seamless as possible because the end-user experience needs to, needs to stay as much as possible the same so there's no interruption in services. So that's been one of our overriding themes. And the Director actually said this. He said, our, our goal is to do no harm, right? So let's, let's not interrupt services. Let's maintain the services and support those teams so that they can deliver on, on their mandates, what they're supposed to deliver into the field. Anyway, I have a few notes. Just wanted to touch on some of these if I could. Our key leaders and teams in IT, human resources, accounting, communications, legal, operations, and administration. I needed to read that because. I needed to read that because sometimes I leave one out, continue to implement and inadvertently leave one out. Implement plans with their work alikes to merge the five additional agencies into the theme that's been overriding for the last 30 days is one agency. There was a lot of concern when you take those, what were independent cabinet agencies? And we try to work to pull them into the Department of Education per the legislation code. And so how will they operate day to day? What are the workflows like? What happens within our operations? So we've had to work through a lot of that. And some of that is very tactical, but some of that is very needed by the employees and the staff within each of those organizations. So organizational change management is taken on a higher priority with us. We are fortunate that the Department of Health and Human Services and some of the legacies, agencies and departments that joined them, they went through this recent, as far as an alignment is concerned. And they had a consultant who came in and helped them create OCM tools, organizational change management tools and processes and systems and discussion points. So we're implementing that within our teams here within the department, but then also within the teams within the emerging agencies as well. Because we can't forget the hearts and minds of those who are, you know, doing the work on a day to day basis, helping them stay as focused as they can on delivering their results versus worrying and wondering about what their future holds. So that's really been a lot of our focus here in the last 30 days. We have like 17 business days between now and June 30. And so it's going to be fast and furious and a lot to get done. There have been some concessions and understandings made, just so you know, that not everything is going to change July 1. Outward facing department wise, all of those agencies will be within the Department of Education. There may be some logistical things. There may be motor pool type agreements we need to work out. There may be MOUs in some regard that need to be worked out. And those things will happen and that's acceptable as long as we're making prime rest for that and we have a goal and we have deadlines. So other than that, I didn't want to take up too much of the time. I didn't want to put you behind schedule. But I do know that I've often said, and I've told the Director this as well, and recognizing the Board of Regents and their staff at UNI and ISU as well, they've been tremendous collaborators and doing great teamwork to help make this happen and to do it well and to support us and to support their employees. They've been tremendous advocates for their teams. And they have positioned themselves well. And they have often, and they've said, even like our general councils, as they work together, they have said, "We're not just going to walk away from this. We're here for as long as you need us to help make this as smooth a transition as possible, especially for our employees and for staff and so that they can, you know, stay focused on what it is they need to achieve." So with that, we are in heavy lifting mode. We have a lot to do in the next three weeks to pull us all into one agency. That's a quick, high level update, but I'd be more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
Will the department maintain its name the way it is?
The Department of Education, yes. There will be several additions and changes within the department, like there's the creation of an innovation division. And that's where Iowa STEM is going to be. So that'll be the innovation division. There's a new division being created called Division of Higher Learning. And so there will be several that will fall into that area. One of those, the Board of Educational Examiners and also Iowa College Aid. Now, that's the plan. That has not been finalized, but that's the trajectory we're moving in.
It would be possible to get, I mean, I know that we probably don't have, and I don't know, Thomas, if you can speak to this, maybe like the scoop over all of those, but just kind of, it doesn't have to be the board meeting in August, but just have them, maybe someone come and just talk about what they do and just to learn more about those different
Absolutely. Yeah, if you have the time on the agenda, they'd be more than willing to do it. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that we've initiated and our communications team has done it, and I had great appreciation to them, when we started talking about culture and blending people together and understanding what each of us do, the communications team head by Heather created lunch and learns. And so the lunch and learns, just the last one we had was with the Board of Educational Examiners. And they came and did a 40, 45 minute presentation, just at a high level. This is what we do. This is why we do it. These are the outcomes. These are our stakeholders. This is who we deal with. And it was live in person here in the Grimes Building, but also it was broadcast over Zoom. And there was great, great attendance at that, wasn't there, Heather?
Yeah, I need to get the exact numbers, but we had like over 25 in person, but we had closer to 70
70 online.
And we do, we do record those
We do.
For first staff, so it's something that the board can compare.
Yeah.
STEM's presenting in July and Iowa College Aid's presenting in August.
And we did notice that there was very strong participation or attendance from those other agencies as well. So it did give us some of the desired effect that we'd hoped for. And so it's, how do we begin intermingling and becoming that one agency?
That's wonderful. My school actually does like a lunch and learn with businesses around our town and around our community. So hearing that you use like kind of that same effect to learn, that's awesome. That's really cool, actually.
It is good. Thanks, Heather.
So Mark, I'm asking you a question, Crystal Ball. How long of a transition process are we looking at here? Everything is where it needs to be. Things are in place. Everything is worked out. Are you talking the next year?
I would say 12 to 18 months, more than likely. My previous experience in the private sector, anytime we would do a large merger or acquisition or anything along those lines, that was the expected timeline. And I don't see it being any different here within a state government agency. It's just, you have to learn how to work together, how to do business together, how we process it in systems. And it'll be a bit clunky, but I appreciate the spirit everyone is coming into this with is we're going to make it work. And so that's hopefully in and of itself, then also leadership within those agencies, encouraging their staff members to, how are we going to, how can we benefit most from this? You know, and the shared services and the working together as teams and being together in one department actually can provide additional strength.
So one of the goals was to be more efficient at the state government level. Do you see that happening?
Yes. Yeah, we have already, there were potentially open positions here within the department that other agencies have staff that we're bringing in. And so they can then assume those roles. And then also just the efficiencies that are gained because I don't think it's a secret, but we're not overstaffed within the department. And so it would, having that additional help to focus on the work collaboratively, many hands, can create greater efficiencies there as well. And there are also opportunities for us to create efficiencies because we have, we have some agencies right now that are in offsite spaces and they're paying to lease those spaces. And so ultimately they will be in the Grimes Building, but the timing of that, it will not be before July 1 or by July 1. For some, it'll be a staggered, you know, entry into the Grimes Building. It's just going to make sense business wise for everyone. So there'll be some attrition within the department? Is that right or not? I mean, is that one of the goals was to be the most efficient you could be? Yes, but Is some attrition that went with that or? That would be on their own volition. There are no jobs eliminated. There's nothing within our mandates to eliminate positions at all. So no one's, no one's job should be eliminated. And as far as compensation is concerned, that should not be impacted as well. So that is, that's what we're operating under. Thank you.
Did you have all this empty room in the building? But you're being, you're able to bring these groups all into one roof or?
Not easily. No. We've had to get creative and I would give a shout out to Shan Severt and her team as well. Severt, Severt? Severt, I always get that wrong. But as far as she and working with our EOs here in-house assessing what are, what are vacancies, what are our cube spaces, what do they look like? And then as we've gone through that work, they've discovered, you know, that we might have a bureau that maybe someone's job changed and they're not part of that bureau, but they sit way over here on the other side of the building. Can we start moving those folks closer together so those teams are closer, there's more cohesiveness? So there are those efforts and those are being studied at this point in time. And I think we're very close to starting to implement some of that. And with that, particularly the consolidation of those work groups together, it's going to free up space for us. We can do it. You know, we have what, 38 people, I believe, within Iowa College Aid? And I think we have 14 or 15 active staff within the Department of Educational Examiners. Iowa School for the Deaf and IESBBI, they're staying put in council bluffs. And then STEM stays put on the UNI campus.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
I'm sure there'll be an update at a future meeting.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
I do want to gloss over our board reporting section on the agenda. Any board member have something they'd like to share as far as board reports concerned?
I'll share something. I was in Davenport, oh, I guess it was Bettendorf for a bill signing and it was for Senate File 318, which creates the Iowa Office of Apprenticeship. And so I was fortunate enough to be able to go out there and I saw TJ Schnuckla, the superintendent for Davenport School District, as some of you might remember from our years and years working with them. And it was just great to see him and they're doing well. And so he actually kind of led the event. It was a registered apprenticeship signing, which was really cool. I'd never seen one of those before. So actually it was signing day for a lot of the rest. So they were coming up and signing, which was really cool to see. So yeah, so TJ's doing well and he sends his hello to everybody. It's probably nice for him not to have to come to us all the time under those circumstances. So it was nice to see him in a positive light.
Yeah, TJ wouldn't be out of the woods. He had to see three of those schools, Davenport schools. So he's got, he's got his work cut out for him and continuing. And then has traveled the district. I've been to state, two state tennis meets, which is really fun, and a state track meet. And I've met with teachers, reading teachers, which I'm really concerned with. An issue, again, that concerns me and what's happening in my own districts that are close to me. I've had a great conversation with Agus Counselor, who's my daughter, about this issue of servicing blind. We still working on that issue. So hey, it's been a good month.
Basically, what I was talking to you about earlier was as the school year ended, what I've been trying to think about to do for the summers, how can I reach kids when school begins again? What can I do as a student to reach out to them? Because I thought, well, maybe I could put something in their papers. Then I thought, well, do I ever read the paper? Not really. I was like, I've been trying to figure it out and hopefully have something drafted up by August and get it out as the school year starts. Because there are so many kids who don't know much about the education system and what this department does that have questions. And I think it'd be really amazing to have their input as well. And for me, I only can see, you know, so much of it. It would be nice to have so many other kids that has the state's opinions and their thoughts and their ideas. So if you have any ideas on how to reach these kids, like if there's any social media things you guys use or ways to connect with these schools, please feel free to shoot me an email with the listing in there. That would be amazing. That would help me out very much.
You're on the right track.
I am a former member of the Greater Dubuque Community Foundation and so I get lots of email from them. And they're having a dyslexia meeting educators in the community. It's part of their overall third grade reading program, which I was heavily involved in. And I was able to share some of our website links with them. They are grateful for that. So hopefully that's kind of a grassroots, the other way coming. That's all.
July 19th and 20th is the Community College Trustees Annual Conference in Cedar Rapids. And we've been able to organize a lunch in before the conference kicks off between the Community College Council and the Community College Presidents. So I'm excited to be convening that conversation and just having an opportunity for the council members to meet with the board presidents and hear the things that they have planned for the upcoming year and attend the conference again. The community colleges are offering that to council members at no charge again, like they did last year. And we are sharing the cost of the lunch.
I'll report this moment.
I did connect with the data analyst at Cedar Rapids Schools after we saw, I saw the data in our board packet. And it was confirmed that what we're seeing here across the state is certainly happening in the Cedar Rapids School District, which is very alarming, chilling, as Director said earlier. And I think it's just really important that I'm with you or with everybody at this table, that this reading thing, we've got to knock that out of our students in state of Iowa.
I think data is key to informing people how to use it correctly and change their instructional habits.
I've done a few school accreditation visits in Iowa and throughout the Midwest and even further. One of the shortcomings of a lot of systems is that there's a ton of data. There's little data analysis and even less using the data to inform instruction. Elementary is far better than secondary. And so we're, and it's time intensive to get through that. So I understand what you're saying.
I will add, though, that they just started the data work five years ago and it was met with a great deal of trepidation and fear. And a lot of people felt, you're coming into my classroom and you're in exposed work here. And I give credit to the staff that they hired, that they turned that around and now it's a very useful tool and teachers are coming to them on a constant and regular basis. And I think that's the key to that success and the analysis and using it correctly.
Just a couple of questions and reflections as far as things in general in the state of Iowa. I know with the education savings account, and I'm not sure where this will all lead to, but somewhere down the road, when the dust settles a little bit, it'd be nice to know some data from the department as far as what impact has this had as far as, we always get the big numbers, number of people applied and number of dollars spent. But to go maybe a little bit beyond that, it's supposed to be a parental choice. How many parents were able to make a choice with these dollars? There are some schools, and I don't know how many, are increasing their tuition, which everybody's going to increase their tuition every year, but is it a big jump, a little jump? And how that works out, like so people that want parental choice, were they able to obtain that through this? That's kind of the bottom line. And so I'd be looking at data for that hopefully in the coming weeks. And the other thing I had on my mind was with the old, the book banning thing. And I see that part of the process now is that you can do this anonymously, which I get it, but then I also read in today's DE blurb that was put out is that there's a lot of people that just kind of do this professionally. That's what they do. Not bound to any state, they just, so I'm kind of wondering how that's going to play out. The other thing that in regards to this too, it seems like to get a book out of the library takes a lot. What about, what does it take to get a book into the library? I would venture to say is that that decision making isn't very extensive or exhaustive. I don't know that, but it seems like once a book's in place, it takes an army of people to decide where that book should stay. But what about placing that book in a school or in a library to begin with? Because sometimes you get donations. Would you take this book and put it in your library? Oh, yeah, pretty book. I'm not saying anybody's doing things contrary to what is right or wrong. I'm just asking the question, is that, what does it take for a book to be put into a school to begin with? And does that counterbalance what it takes to do? So things that are on my mind.
I think it'd be interesting to, yeah, I agree with you on the education savings account, just like getting some data. I mean, obviously I'm not expecting, like six months here, I don't know. But, you know, I have friends who are kind of saying that, you know, that some schools in the Des Moines area were a full up. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see, like, if they're at capacity, how are they taking more students? Are they, are they expanding? Are they, are they expanding? Are they, you know? I mean, I don't know, but, you know, I mean, I know people who tried to move from one private school to another one and like couldn't because there was such a long waiting list. I mean, or, I mean, so, yeah. It'd be interesting just to see how many of this actually, you know, helped or whatever. And then also I think that, I think that data and having schools know how to use the data is super useful. I also think that parents need to understand how important it is K through third because I have friends who have kids in third grade and they're like, oh, you know, they're still struggling with reading. And I'm like, that's going to be a problem. Like, you need to do something about that. And they're kind of like, you know, like they'll figure out eventually, this is a problem. You need to do something about that. Well, I do not realize it's a problem. Like, but like, you know, I mean, me sitting there saying, like, you know, this is a problem probably isn't the best thing or whatever. But just kind of helping parents understand that if your kid is still struggling in third grade to read, then that is a problem. And it'll probably be a problem that will continue on and will probably just work its way out, most likely. So maybe really focusing on that K through third for parents' understanding and maybe seeking outside help or whatever resources are available in the school or whatever.
All right, moving along. Like, we have graduation rates.
Yeah, I've got the next three items, so starting in advance. So I know, I think I'm the last agenda item before you start talking about the retreat. So we packaged like three different sets of data into this presentation. I tend to move quickly, so please ask questions, let's make this interact. I think there was a lot of really good discussion. You know, Kim had her presentation and there's new information in this presentation that will really help the board. So the first piece is graduation rates that we released in March for the class of 2020. The second piece is a website that just went live a little bit ago, earlier today, called the Iowa Post-Secondary Readiness Reports. And then the third piece is this Closing Achievement Gaps Report, which has multiple sources to it, an update on demographics, an update on the latest data we have about the achievement gaps. And then the last piece is like a learning loss analysis that we did with SAS. So in March, again, we released the graduation rates for the, this is the four-year cohort rate. And I'm actually going to stand up if you don't mind. And you can see here the year-to-year is down to just under 90%. We've got, you know, an 11-year trend of data. And you can see we're still up, like, long-term we're up, but near-term we're down in the four-year grad rate. This gives a lot more information about subgroups, which goes into the gaps issue related to the percentage of students that graduate again in four years. We also released five-year rates as well. I'm not going to talk about those. This green bar really represents, again, that long-term decade view. And you can see that, you know, by and large, for most subgroups, all students, we are up over that long-term trend. But if you do the year-to-year, it's mainly down. And that's, you know, while these are Iowa's rates, this is, we're seeing a similar phenomenon with other states as well.
I'm going to try to ask a question and not sound too terribly dumb.
Yeah, it's good.
So do you track students that start the freshman year and actually graduate or have, do you keep track of the students that have dropped out or somehow disappeared in the district?
Yeah, so that's actually a great rate, or great, great, great question. And with ESSA, you know, the Restudent Succeeds Act and some of those requirements, one of the requirements was a common graduation metric. And before that, it was sort of a cross-section, like we take the ninth graders four years ago and then the 10th graders, so we weren't actually tracking. But with our state ID system, we're doing exactly what you mentioned. We're taking first-time freshmen, so we actually go back a year and say, was this kid in eighth grade the year before or were they a freshman again? So we make sure that they're all starting at the same point. And then we look four years later to say, did those same kids graduate? And then there's, you know, those that move in, move out, those that drop out, et cetera. But there's like an exhaustive accounting of every kid. So we've got, within year, all the kids that start in the year, we've got like an exit. And then we do the same thing. So did they move to homeschool? Did they transfer out of state? You know, and it's not just a self-report. The state, you know, districts are supposed to have documentation about transfers. So we account for all those missing kids.
Thank you.
Yeah. But it does give us both, you know, certainly confidence in these numbers, but also national, the ability to compare to, you know, our surrounding states across the US. So the next piece that I'm going to talk about is our Iowa Post-Secondary Readiness Reports website. And, you know, I can actually switch over to the site here in a minute. This site is actually, well, we, the Department of Ed, release it. It's a collaboration. We work closely with our Board of Regents. Jeremy left, but, you know, the Community College Division within the Department of Ed. And Iowa College Aid is a partner and workforce development. And so, so while we take the lead, the numbers you'll see in this report is actually a collaboration. So to be clear, we're actually, you know, linking student data with college enrollment within the state, with community college enrollment within the state. And then there's a clearinghouse that allows us to get, you know, information on students that enroll in privates, kids that leave the state, et cetera. And the big idea is, you know, you know, what does, you know, when I first started at the department, we truly did not have a means to be able to determine what the college enrollment rates of our high school kids look like. We certainly know the enrollment rates of those four-year universities, but actually being able to localize it by high school, by district, and that state level of year. So that's what this website does. And then there's disaggregations by student groups. So I'm just going to switch over real quick. So this is the landing page. I'm going to, there's a ton of really good information. So we've got like a dashboard for every high school. We've got enrollment trends. We've got enrollment trends disaggregated. But I'm, you know, given that I only have an hour here, I can't possibly go into all of the detail. So I will just show you one piece. So this is sort of cross-sectional data and it represents four different data points. So the top line are kids that are intending to go to college. So requirement for every high school is an exit survey. So they're asking their seniors, what are your plans next year? And there are other, you know, do you want to go to an apprenticeship program? Are you planning to go to work? But this represents going to college, again, two-year, four-year, in-state, out-of-state. The second measure, so that number you can see over the last decade has declined 10 percentage points. The second number represents the percent of students from an Iowa high school. I just showed you graduation rates. So of those that graduated, what percentage actually enroll in college? So within one year of leaving high school. So you can see, again, similar trend, dropped about eight percentage points over a decade. The third piece is, what are the percent of students that actually go on to persist to a second year? So did they make it from freshman year to sophomore year? And then the last piece is, what percent of students actually graduate six years after leaving high school? Any questions on any of that?
You said college at one point.
No.
Is it all students that go on to even CTE? Is that included in this?
It's any student that graduated from high school.
Okay.
Is this, is the starting percentage?
Completed, but completed some post-secondary training.
Yeah, so this would include any degree certificate. It would include any kid that, you know, so they would hold whether or not, so let's say they actually did get an associate's degree while in high school. There's a really small percentage that would be included in it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know why the trend is going down?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. So a couple of things, you know, this is not just an Iowa phenomenon. Like, there's a, you know, this whole narrative around the value of a college degree, the cost. And clearly, you know, there's value, you know, the numbers show a million dollars in lifetime's earning compared to those that don't. So that's part of it. But you also have this pandemic effect too, that has sort of exacerbated this downward trend that we were seeing previously.
Do you have that male, female?
Yeah, it's right here. So this is all, like I said, live. So if you want to look at female, you can see it's better than the state average. If you look at males, you'll see it's worse than the state average. And we actually did, as part of this collaboration, dig into the.
I was just connecting with Sophia on something.
There was a site.
Who rules the world?
Can I move quickly? Please stop me. We did dig in, so if you go to our website, and I'm happy to share this with the board, we dug into this, not using the most recent 22 data, but the year before, to try to get at this. And particularly if you look at poverty and male, female, you know, white poverty, male in particular, the numbers are really startling.
Is it included in the mix of thoughts of these trends that for the last 10 years, we, as a country, have been talking about the value of trades as a vocation as opposed to college?
Yes.
Is that part of the mix of the, that we see in this decline, do you think?
So we have not, so we have, we've been working with IWD, again, they're a partner. We have the go-ahead to add apprenticeship data. But typically, folks that go into those apprenticeship programs, those, you know, are older than the sixth year. And so we're going to add it. It doesn't change the picture much. We're talking, you know, tens of a percentage. But with that narrative, work-based learning, et cetera, those pathways, I think, are more available than they have been before. So it will definitely make a difference, but the data today don't change this picture.
To me, the question would be, is it a cause or is it a consequence, though? I mean, I don't know if the data would show that, you know, it probably wouldn't, right?
Yeah, probably not. But there was a narrative that said, not everybody has to go to college.
I get it, I get it. But, you know, when we talk data, you like to be not with anecdotal, which I would call a narrative, to, did people say it was the high cost of college? It was, it was, I don't value it, it's not a thing in my family. Or I, whatever, versus, while I didn't have any choice, I got to be 28, I better find something to do to support a family.
So there are some blind spots. I mean, military is a great example. We don't, for obvious reasons, have the ability to look at military records. But that would certainly, you know, that's, you know, an industry and an outcome that I think we would want to support. There's also like non, like industry-recognized credentials that don't come from a higher institute of higher education. Things like, you know, somebody that's getting like certified to work in Amazon Web Services or in the cloud, like you can make a good wage. But there's just no good data source for that kind of information.
Jay, individual school districts can look up.
Yeah, so if you click here, you can click this blue button. And now you can see this same, so pick a high school, any high school, and it will show you that trend as well. So the idea is we're not just pushing out, like we're making this local. So let's have a local conversation about what kids are doing. How can we better support folks to, you know, if they're on a college-bound track? You know, how can we raise these numbers?
Back in the day, we sent reports from Iowa City and Cedar Falls as far as our kids, their classes and their grades, back in the day.
Wonder about the general discussion about debt too, has impacted this. Been a pretty deal more discussion about the debt kids hold when they're graduating now, as opposed to maybe 10 years ago or 15 years ago. A lot of kids don't want to graduate with that level of debt. They're reading sociology or psychology or whatever.
It's really concerning, right? Definitely very concerning. And even though we're coming up with all of these reasons why it may be happening, it's still very.
Because the total pool is also shrinking at the same time.
So one other thing I'll add, which I forgot to mention too, like, I think having, you know, there's a known phenomenon too, when the economy is really, you know, hot and there are lots of jobs available. And I know more recently, last couple of years, clearly things have cooled. But I think part of that longer-term downward trend has to do with the economy. Like, you know, when there are fewer jobs, folks tend to, you know, make choices to go to school. Just two more things on this. And this actually is not publicly available, but schools have access to this particular data. So what this is showing you is first fall enrollment. And so, so we're seeing that, you know, there was obviously a big decline. So, but, you know, we're starting to see this, it's still down, but to level off a little bit compared to where it had been. And it's more pronounced here, so you can actually see it going up. Well, it's only half a percentage point, you know? It begs the question, you know, have we kind of hit bottom? And maybe are we stabilizing and can we begin to sort of reverse that? That's my hope. But seeing this certainly helps with that kind of thinking. So the last report is this Closing Achievement Gaps Report. It's a legislatively required report. We're going to push this out on the website, so you're actually getting the preview of what's contained within the report. So it's an opportunity, and, you know, the State Board has had a longstanding goal of closing the achievement gap. So this report directly provides information about the progress with that State Board goal. I also have an update, which I'll jump into, about demographics of students that are attending Iowa schools. Then there's latest information on the ISAS. And to be clear, it's the Spring '22 Administration. We just closed the Spring of '23, so I'm really interested to see what the data tell us. But I won't have that until fall. That's when we receive it. And then we did an analysis with SAS, specifically looking at learning loss. So the first piece is, you know, and this is from the Fall '22 Enrollment. And you can see here the change over the last 20 years in the percent of the, you know, the demographics of students attending Iowa schools. And you can see the percent of students that are white has certainly changed. And then the percent of students of color has continued to increase. Just to sort of put this in national. Just to sort of put this in national context, I don't know if it was three or four years ago, but the National Center for Education Statistics comes out with their annual condition report. And within that timeframe, the US as a whole has switched from, you know, a white majority to a white minority. So we're now a majority-minority state as a whole. So while the demographics of students attending Iowa schools has changed, we're still largely a white homogeneous state as a whole, in terms of our racial makeup within schools. The next piece is just looking at free or reduced-priced lunch. And this, the top bar represents total kids eligible. The second bar are kids that are eligible for free lunch. So if you were to add the bottom two bars up, you'd get the top bar. And then the bottom bar is reduced-price lunch. So you could see over the last decade, it's gone up slightly, but it's been barely consistent. The interesting thing, I think, here is that the reduced-price lunches declined slightly. And reduced-price lunch is like 185% of the federal poverty level. And free lunch is like 185% of the poverty level. So what this tells you is that with the, you know, slightly larger percentage of those eligible for free lunch, that maybe you've got kids that are, you know, closer to that 185%. So I guess more impoverished might be a way to look at it slightly than, than those that are at that 135%. Does that make sense? Do you have questions?
It makes sense. One statistic I always saw, it was interesting if you could ever find it out, is that there's a number of families, I don't know how many, will not apply for free or reduced lunch, even though they would qualify.
And they generally drop off in high school ages, right?
Yeah, in high school as a test.
It goes down.
Even though they qualify, they.
Right.
Yeah.
Because of that, I know in some states, we do look at data related to the poverty. So you use census data to look at poverty in communities. So you can see, but looking at your overall test data in the state, but what is happening to poverty as your test data changes? And so you saw like when the economy expanded in the last decade, poverty rates typically went down. The absolute levels of poverty are lower in most parts of the country because there were more resources. And so, you know, but that's one of the things, I think, to balance, because it sometimes tracks with free and reduced-priced lunch. But because of all the reasons people may not apply, that's, it, it adds additional data for folks like Jay to be able to sift through, to try to figure out what the trends are.
And to add to that, Iowa is about 10% of school-aged families that are at the actual poverty level. And it goes up slightly and down slightly, but it's about 10%.
What's the national average?
I don't know.
Honestly, 17, but I'm not sure.
So, so we're below the national average?
I will check.
Yeah, I know a lot of stats, I don't have that one in.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's good, that's a great question. And just to also, one other piece too, we are part of a pilot set of states that are looking at a different, an alternative measure to using free, reduced-priced lunch. So while that is the proxy in schools, we know it's imperfect. I mean, there are schools that do, you know, what's called community eligibility. So they feed 100% of kids. So they've stopped collecting the eligibility applications. And, and we asked them to, to do a household income survey, and we don't receive those data, but the school does, to, to, to sort of fill that void. But this, this, to Director Aldous's point, as part of this pilot, we'll be able to look at localities and be able to say like, how close are we based on this free or reduced-priced lunch versus using household income data from the Census Bureau? So I don't have the results on that. My team is working on that now, but it's just sort of an interesting thing that should be very helpful and, you know, hopefully coming up with a newer and more accurate measure.
Well, especially in the last couple, I mean, because I know at least a lot of my public schools, I think, or at least ours, I think they used, or not for my money, okay, so they use the SLIF money or ARPA money in order to, I guess they would have been like SRF funds to fund lunches and breakfast. So I know Greenwood Elementary, you know, my son would go every morning and he would get breakfast and lunch and I didn't have to pay a dime for it. And it was for anyone who, you know, was there enrolled could get it, so it wasn't. So, I mean, I don't know if they were collecting that either or not, but I know that was open to anybody. And I'm, I'm assuming it's probably from pandemic funds that were available. I don't know if they'll continue it in the future, as these funds, you know, have been expended, but. So, I don't, I mean, maybe for the last couple of years, maybe they weren't, you know, more schools maybe had available funds to use for stuff like that, so.
Schools qualify because of growing for all poverty level.
Oh, okay.
Districts make that.
That was, that was before the pandemic.
That was before the pandemic, yeah.
And that's a community eligibility piece.
Okay.
So it's really, it's a financial calculation. Am I going to get more from USDA for offering free lunches versus trying to collect? But that community eligibility is ongoing and has been, you know, available for a decade.
Summer lunch now, right, is served, summer lunch in a lot of communities, not just winter. No, all right, right, I missed, I missed, missing.
Yeah, if, if they decide to, and I think that, you know, Heather just worked on the release of that news item about, you know, all the, you know, the summer food programs that are happening across the state.
Director Aldous mentioned that there are close to 500 locations. The locations have to be in an area that primarily has low-income residents, but any student 18 and under to be served. Those, and there are a lot of different type of site locations. Lots are schools, but there's also parks, camps, community organizations. And so there's a lot of opportunities for students to be in walking distance to go and get an election.
So moving on, there's a lot of data on here. And so just to kind of orient you, on the left-hand side, this is looking at English Language Arts and the Black-White Achievement Gap. And on the right side, we've got the Hispanic-White Gap. On the bottom, you've got on the x-axis grade levels. And on the y-axis, you've got what's called a scale score. So if you think about like ACT has a high of 36, and that's like, you know, something everybody knows. Well, ISAS also has a scale, I mean, it's not 36. You can see here in third grade, it's about a 400. And then it goes up to over 600, is sort of, just to get you oriented. And then the bottom piece represents, in this case, Hispanic students. So in third grade, in, in the most recent year is orange, so that's 21, 22. On average, third-grade Hispanic students in English Language Arts scored a 399. And on the, the circle represents the white student group. And then the number to the side represents the gap. So it gives you a ton of data. So what's the average score between Hispanic students and white students? And how big is that gap? Does that make sense? And then you can see it across, while these are cross-sectional data, you can see the size of the gap. So you can tell like between years, are we closing or increasing the gap? But then also comparing third grade to 11th grade. And, you know, Director Aldous pointed this out earlier. And it's, you know, not necessarily easy to, to just sort of pick out if you, if you don't know what you're looking at. But you can see here, the average gap between third-grade Hispanic students in the most recent year, which was Spring of 22, was 15 scale score points. And typically on, in any year, it's about 20 scale score points per grade level, is what you would expect most kids to score. But by 11th grade, you can see it went from 15 points to 31 points. So it's getting wider the longer kids are in school. And there's lots of reasons for that. You know, where do kids start? Did they miss a lot of school? We talked a lot about chronic absenteeism. And if you think about that 18 days per year, which would be that 10%, if you compound that year after year, 10 years, you've lost an entire year of schooling. And, you know, if we start in kindergarten, you know, you're talking 14 grade level. So, so that's certainly a factor, but not the only factor. And then you can see here for black students, and then you can also do comparison between the black-white and Hispanic-white gaps to see, you know, so, you know, 399 for Hispanic students compared to 393 for black students. 21 scale score points for black students, 15 scale score points. So it's more, certainly more pronounced for black or African-American students. And then the gap gets wider as kids leave. And then when we think about what we just looked at, college enrollment rates, and then you start doing, you know, well, we just looked at male, female, there's some pretty startling numbers in terms of, you know, different race and ethnic groups and their college enrollment rates. But, you know, if you're leaving, you know, again, 20 points, like two years roughly behind kids on average, by the time you're in 11th grade, that's not even taking into account 12th grade. It's not surprising that you're going to see some differences.
Jay, are there any years where the percentages have shrunk? My eyes don't quite focus.
Yes. All that up in your head really quick? By the way, the report has a lot more, that's just one comparison, black-white on ELA, math looks very similar as well. But this is an attempt to, you know, to get to exactly what you were saying, John, which is to try to digest all of those, you know, scale score differences across years. So what this represents is we're looking at 18 and 19 to 21, 22. So we're looking at the out, you know, the out-years, the longer-term trend. And, and by the way, we switched assessments, so there's, there aren't data before 18, 19 that are really comparable on that same scale. But you could see here, you know, what we're trying to do at the bottom is summarize all that data. And to get to the chase, you know, you could see here, 46% had an increase in gap. Then 31 point or 32% had a, you know, a decrease in the gap, but only because the higher-performing group dropped and didn't, and the lower-performing group didn't make up as much ground. So basically, long-winded way to say, you know, if we were to add those together, you've got, you know, 78% are either increasing or the gap is decreasing, but for the wrong reason. So in other words, we're not making progress in closing the gaps.
And those demographics are changing also that we saw. The percentage of, of non-white students is increasing. So, you know, what strategies are we putting in place now to affect that long-term trend?
Absolutely.
Because in 10 years, I mean, you'll probably have 50% minority or more.
Right.
And then that means that the achievement is going to be like off the charts, right? It's going to be not off the charts bad, not good.
So, right, what are, absolutely, yeah. So it's changing about, like just about 0.8 percentage points a year, so just under 1% increase in the percent of students of color every year. So, you know, in 10 years, it'll be just under 10% based on a rate of change now.
So Jay, you said that the assessment changed.
Yes.
Also, wasn't there a point in time where assessments were throughout the state, given in the fall or the spring? They weren't consistently given the same period of time? What's the status of that now?
So that changed once we switched to the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress, that ISAS.
Yeah.
They took away the ability to pick the time of year. We were able to translate the fall testers to what they would be if they had scored in spring. It's, it's imperfect, but it's pretty close. But that was less than ideal. No other state had, you know, the ability to pick any time of year.
But now it's the same year for.
It's standard across the state.
And all of the data you're presenting today was end-of-year tests?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
I'd be curious, first of all, what the gender would look like, what the gender gap would look like in this, in this field of endeavor? Be interesting to see that. Probably available somewhere. But it's not surprising in many respects, because the older you get, the more your classes are segregated. That is, you have a certain group of people that are taking those advanced literature classes and so forth. True. And it's, it would be surprising that this would grow, would, would continue to grow. And I wonder how much we encourage kids in CTE programs takes away from what they might do in literature, writing, composition. I'm not suggesting that we don't try to educate, I'm just saying, isn't that sort, this sort of natural that we would see that kind of disparage?
Shouldn't these numbers be big enough though, that it addresses like, I mean, there's so many people in this analysis that.
Yeah.
Something like what he's talking about shouldn't have a material effect, should it?
I mean, so yeah, the, per grade level, it's 35,000 kids that we're, we're talking about. But I'm not sure I'm understanding your point, Mike, sorry.
Well, my point is that you can see why there is growth in the gap. It seems to me because of the classes you're taking. I'm much more ready to face an assessment if I have been in a composition class, you know, through high school or at the end of high school or the middle part of high school, and a literature class through that. But if I'm focused just on a trade, does it make some sense? And not, not that you don't have to be right to read the instructions and things that you're learning. I mean, I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm just saying, it seems to me that this, this is a natural growth apart. Not one that you necessarily want, but it just seems to be, in terms of what we're doing in education, a reality.
But Mike, don't you still have your state requirements of three years of math?
Sure, sure.
Even in.
But what three years of math are you taking compared to me? Or what classes are you taking in composition compared to me? I mean, you're brighter than I am, so you're taking these advanced classes, and here's poor Mike. He doesn't get a chance to do that, or doesn't want to do that.
Or doesn't need to.
Well, but remember what's interesting, people take ACT prep courses to go back to what the basic, you know, like, I go back and study algebra again, even though I just took my first year of calculus, because it's just been three years since I was in there.
I, I don't know, I, I. So another measure, which actually is not in the report, and you know, Director Aldous brought this up when we were actually putting the report together. So in retrospect, probably should have included it, but, you know, another measure. So, so while we're looking at sort of average achievement across grades, another way to look at is the percent of students that are proficient in English Language Arts or math, which is, those numbers are also startling when we're looking at. And so it certainly changes per grade level. And, you know, when we switched to the ISAS, we did actually see a drop in the proficiency levels statewide. But, you know, as an example, in third grade, for black students, it's less than 50% of students are, are proficient in, in ELA.
So that's really the thing we care about. That's the gap we care about, right?
Well, I think you care about both.
I mean, yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean it the way it sounded, but I mean, we don't want anybody below proficient.
Right, so what's that?
If you do it, 50% of your population is below, at the end of third grade, so saying that they're below proficient and they, so they can't, so they're not proficient in reading. And then they go to fourth grade, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, that gets.
I mean, that's just, I mean, compounds, right? So I mean, it certainly.
It's going to get worse.
You're not proficient. I mean, I know, I mean, it's just like, because they, I mean, are they teaching kids to read in, in fourth grade? Or are they just teaching kids? And you just have to read, and that's a, I mean, that's just something that you have to build on, right? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm reading to learn right now, I am not learning to read anymore, right?
Yeah. So it starts before third grade, right? Like what, you know, it starts with statewide voluntary, it actually starts before, like, what's the, what's the safe? It actually starts before, like, what's the, what's the safety net look like? How do we begin to identify, you know, and, and, you know, consider academic, I mean, the, the, the public investment in early childhood pre-K, you know, economists have done this, right? I mean, it pays off in the long run, big time. But back to your question, Mike, like, I think just looking at those proficiency rates would get a, like, we would expect regardless of, you know, someone's going into a trade, that they be proficient in ELA or Math.
Sure. Jay, what's the definition of proficient?
I mean, in, in our state, yeah, so it's different. Each state has its own definition.
What's our definition? Cause I could tell you the background, but go ahead. I don't hear it from you. What's the definition of proficient?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, in Iowa, it's, you know, a, a basic ability to read, write and comprehend.
But what is, yeah, okay. But what is, I take the ISAS, how do I know if I'm proficient?
Well, I mean, so the way that it was created, like they had panels of educators that look at the items on the tests and say, who, you know, based on, you know, the, based on the standards, based on the makeup of the test, you know, how many questions or what questions should kids get right? So educators sort of set the bar in terms of that minimum, you know, reading, writing and language arts.
So is it, is it criterion reference now?
It is.
And that's people, the ISAS was developed by, it's Iowa.
Iowa Testing Program. But they, you know, they set the standards with a panel of, you know, experts.
Didn't we used to say about 40% on the test? Did he give a test? Is that, is that not?
Well, on the old Iowas, it was about 80% of students were proficient in
To a level of?
Of proficiency.
Well, took the test. I, I mean, we're afraid, are we afraid to say this? I mean, I, I think the standard is so low that we all get frustrated with that. We look at the standard of course efficiency and man, it's low, you know? And, and we're still not having a 95 or 100% of our kids proficient. That's what scares me is that it's a little deceiving sometimes to say, we're this 60% proficient. When the truth is, they're barely proficient.
Agreed. I mean, different states, so like the NAEP proficiency level is much more of a college going level. And, and so unfortunately, I don't have that data, but
It's sort of 35% nationally for NAEP.
Yeah.
In terms of proficiency.
35%.
So how much time do I have left? I'll, I'll try to be brief. I know. So this is what's called an effect size. An effect size is a statistical measure that, you know, typically goes from zero to one. And the closer you get to one, and it goes above one, but that's a separate thing. So like, you know, what we're trying to do here is again boil down that data to say, you know, how big is the, is the gap difference? And, and so, you know, 0.8 and above is considered a large effect. A 0.5 and above is considered a medium effect. So you can see here, you know, certainly the black, white gap is considered large and the poverty, non-poverty and Hispanic, white, you know, is somewhere between, you know, medium getting closer to large. So not only significant, but also large. So the next piece is learning loss. So we engage with SAS. SAS is a statistical company. They have a software package, but they also have a suite of really bright people, both in the education sector, but also other sectors, healthcare, finance, et cetera. And basically what they did is they took the historical Iowa tests and maybe I'll just jump ahead to this one. This picture is a little bit better. So they took the student's score history and, you know, rule of thumb, if you, the best predictor of how you will, how you will do on a test is your last test score. So, and there are other factors, but by and large, prior performance is a great predictor of future performance. So they took, so the dark blue spots represent, in this case, ELA. So they took a kid's score history and then they ran a regression model and they say, you know, based on this kid's score history, what do we predict that student to score in the future? And so that represents, you know, what their pre-pandemic expectation is. And then we did the comparison between what the student actually scored and their predicted
It's a regression, a mean analysis. What was their average? What was it? You think over time, everybody gets to the average. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Not to the average. We expect them to get
Their air.
Yeah, to their prediction. Yes.
Which is built on their prior test.
Yes. And we did that for every kid in the state that we had data for to say, you know, the big picture question or here, here, you know, what was the overall impact on student achievement from the pandemic? Did the observed impacts vary by grade and subject? Did the observed impacts vary by student group? Spoiler alert, chronic absenteeism was one of the worst ones. And then, you know, where are our kids in their recovery? So based on the 21 spring results, 22 spring results, are we getting closer to what our pre-pandemic achievement would have been if the pandemic had not occurred? So the report has a ton of data. And again, in the interest of time, I can't get into all of that. But I mean, so this is actually, I think, really good news. And that is, by and large, on average, students are performing similarly to what, what they might, you know, have been, what their expectations were. So we're still a little bit behind, but only slightly behind. And the effect sizes are really small. So SAS did this for Iowa. They didn't do it for all states. I mean, it was a state choice, but for the states where there are public data available, Iowa looks the best out of all of those. So it's, you know, that's certainly, I think, in the scheme of, you know, we've talked a lot about areas of opportunity, supports. This, I think, is really good news. But we shouldn't rest on our laurels. We still need to keep the metal, or the, our foot down on, on the gas pedal. And math didn't fare as well as English Language Arts. So, you know, math support is, is, is needed more than ELA. So to triangulate this, I mentioned NAEP. So the National Assessment of Educational Progress, it's given every two years. Iowa and every state has, has a sampling that includes about, you know, 2,000 kids per grade level. It includes about 175 schools that are chosen. So like, we don't get to pick. US Department of Ed has this very elaborate sampling. So they pick and then they also pick the students that take the test just to make sure that, you know, it's statistically a valid sample. We've get enough students from enough different places to represent the student groups that are within the state, et cetera. And we had to postpone the spring 21 administration for obvious reasons. So in fall of 22, the US Department of Ed released the latest round of NAEP results. And nationally, it was pretty, again, pretty startling. The largest declines in performance since 90. So we've got, you know, 30 plus years. So the larger declines was, was in math. Reading decline on, and so I'm talking about the national average, wasn't quite as dramatic as math, but was definitely significant. So this is somewhat bittersweet in the sense that Iowa fared fairly well. So we were only, so to be clear, NAEP tests in grades four and eight in reading and math. So we're talking about just four, you know, two grade levels, two content areas. And they do other tests, but this is what's considered the main NAEP. It has the longest trends. So Iowa was one of six states that only saw a significant decline in one area. So we saw a significant decline in eighth grade math. All the other states had significant declines in two or more content areas. So Iowa's relative placement actually increased compared to other states, but only because so many other states lost ground.
What happened in 1990?
What happened in 90? Well, that was like the first year that we've got
The point, okay.
Yeah. So like, NAEP goes back before that, but like, that's where the main states started doing testing. And it wasn't until the 2000s that it was actually required. So we've been participating in 1990, but only because we felt like we as a state felt like it was a good use of time and gave us those national comparisons.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the end of the presentation. A lot of really good information, college enrollment, high school graduation rates, obviously challenges, you know, between the particularly black, white students, but certainly, you know, poor and non-poor students. The learning loss research, I think, is, you know, that's promising, right? Like we're close back, you know, not quite, but close to. And then certainly those NAEP results are, are somewhat, I think, bittersweet. The next round of administration is in spring of 24, but it'll be released in fall of 24 for, for NAEP. So that'll give us a better sense of both how Iowa's doing, but certainly, you know, the nation as a whole in terms of its, you know, recovery efforts. So what questions, additional questions that we didn't talk about?
Jay, we cite NAEP because it's the best we have to compare ourselves with other countries.
Other states.
States. So that would be, I mean, if everybody's not familiar with NAEP, at least 1% of American students take that every other year. Is that fair or not? Is that, am I exaggerating or?
I don't know the percentage. I mean, you know, we've got, like I said, about 2,000 kids per grade level. It, it has to be a large enough sample based on the state's size. So California is going to have a lot of kids than Iowa participating, but I don't, I don't know the percentage.
We can disaggregate American students taking a test, but also we have a reference to foreign countries and how their students perform.
Not on NAEP. They, US Department of Ed does, there are other assessments. One's called TINs that really focuses on math. Then there's PISA, which provides those national benchmarks. And, and we in states certainly that not only do the NAEP, but when we're drawn to participate in any of those others, we certainly will. That only gives, you know, US compared to other countries. It doesn't allow for further analysis. So, so there, there was a group a few years ago that was doing some international benchmarking using NAEP, but yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So just so you know, Jay does have some certificates to sign if you need continuing education credits. Those will be available as you exit today?
There's also a test, like what's an effect size?
Oh my gosh.
110,000 students nationwide.
So, I mean, again,
110,000.
110.
Students nationwide.
Interesting. That would be about 200.
4,000 in California.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
A 2,000 Iowa.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So my, my question is always, this, this data is good. It gives us a snapshot, right, in time and how we compare everything. As we think about the pandemic and, and kind of you were showing us, as those, that learning loss improves. But there's going to be those, I'll say, eighth graders that lost that year or two years. What's going to happen, you know, when they're in that 11, 12th grade year? How much, you know, is that gap going to accelerate for students especially of color? And then the remediation rate at the community college level? So what do we do as, you know, as a state to help educators prepare or to focus on that or school boards or whoever to say, how do we look at those at risk? I'm going to call them at risk, everybody who was, I mean, actually in school during the pandemic, but at those really important points, third grade, you know, eighth grade? And what do we do differently to make sure that they are going to succeed? It's kind of rhetorical, but you know, data's great. But again, as we talked about, only if you can analyze it and then put it into, I think, into action, right?
Around the same wavelength as my next question. I may be up for Jay, but just rhetorical question. Okay, here's more data. One of our priorities as a state school board was to leverage whatever we can to close achievement gaps. And okay, so we have a pandemic, so we're set back a little bit along this journey, but okay, pandemic's over. As a state board, as a department of ed, how can we have those conversations? Or what leverage can we apply to narrow those gaps?
Yeah, I mean, we've been seeing this, I mean, it's been kind of consistently bad, you know, with the black versus white and Hispanic. I mean, that one's not as bad, but still, since I've been on the state board of education. And every year it's kind of like, you see that and you're like, okay, so what can we do? We have the data, how can we use it? How can we actually, you know, close the achievement gap? What needs to happen? I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, us alone, obviously it's a, it's more of a system wide change.
Absolutely.
But I just, it's, it's kind of disheartening when you keep on seeing this over and over again and you're just not sure where you can start, so.
I mean, I think, you know, just to highlight some of the work that Kim was doing, like, you know, while we're looking at the lowest 5% and really trying to like, okay, what are the common things, right? That could, you know, really help the bottom, you know? And these aren't groundbreaking things in a lot of ways, but it does certainly help hone, you know, like what are the things that I need to do in my building to address this issue? Okay, you know, where are we in terms of high quality material? Where are we in terms of our PLCs? How are we using that time? Is it focused? Do we need an analyst in the room to sort of, you know? I mean, educators are being bombarded, you know, day to day, behavior issues, et cetera. Like they don't have the capacity to like, sit down and run all these reports. So how can we make it more accessible and easier to access? You know, another piece just related to the engagement with SAS that the director just announced yesterday is an opportunity